I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Martin Lewis.
Lord's Prayer. O'God, who art in heaven, thou be thy name, thy kingdom come, and thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us. We need not be tempted, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Pledge and lead us to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Margaret Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Item one, public comment. Please have your phones on vibrate and there's no back and forth. Do we have any comment cards? We have none. All right. Uh, item two, A.
Acceptance of the minutes of February 22nd, 2023, which will publish on March 8th, 2023.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Martin Lewis.
Second.
Uh, second by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion about our February 22nd meeting?
My pleasure.
Pleasure. Hearing and seen none? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. I'm 3A.
And Zach Mitchell to discuss the You Are Wonderful campaign.
Uh, Zach's not here yet, so say we could move on and we'll just catch up with him when he comes. If that's okay with everybody?
On me.
Great. Madam Clerk?
For A. Discuss and consider the veto of ordinance number 2022-26, which is an ordinance to amend and extend for a period of 25 years until December 6th, 2050. Ordinance number 2000-580, adopted November 8th, 2000, which ordinance granted a franchise to Clico Power LLC formerly Clico Utility Group Incorporated, its successors, and assigns for the construction, maintenance, and operation of electric utilities, electric generating facilities, and/or transmission and distribution of distribution systems in, through, and across the city of New Iberia, Louisiana municipality, and for the use of the streets, alleys, and public places of said municipality in connection therewith for the generation, transmission, distribution, and sale of electric current, energy, and/or power, and to modify the terms of said franchise granted in ordinance number 2000-580 as herein after set forth.
Thank you. Um, you have in front of you in your packet my letter from the veto, and it basically comes down to what we voted on is not what we were getting. It was very close, but we had one item that we could not agree on. That was the LED lights. So, you know, the majority of this council rules, so I had no choice but to veto it because we would be back to our original deal, which had none of the concessions Clico made and had, you know, not even a guarantee of the funds of the two laps around the city a year patrolling the lights, of any verbiage about solar lights, of any verbiage about LED lights. So with that, I had no choice. So I did what I needed to do and I vetoed it. So I bring it before you, um, you know, the rules are five votes could overturn a veto. Um, not that we'd want to do that because we would have no deal at all except the original deal, so I don't think that's wise. But, uh, once I veto something, the rule is I couldn't get it on the last agenda because it was too late. So it's on the agenda for discussion and any consideration you'd want to give it. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you for not just signing it, uh, because it's not what we approved.
Well, it wasn't what you approved.
Yeah, so, um, if you could, I know you've already invested a whole lot of time in negotiating. If you can continue to talk to Clico and negotiate on our behalf and, uh, try to get what we can out of the contract, um, we definitely don't want to settle for what we have before, which is absolutely nothing. So, um, if we could keep pushing forward, that'd be great.
I have had conversations. Eric Swest called me, the senior vice president, and on their end, they would be interested in continuing to negotiate as well. They'd like to do it a little differently, and they're talking about doing some, uh, meetings with council members, and I'm fine with that. I think that's a, it could be a good productive idea. Um, so I'll let them know that I would do this tonight because this is the process and, uh, you know, go from there.
So.
I think, I think that, um, this whole council has a lot of time invested in this, this proposal. Lot of meetings, lot of hours, lot of discussion, as well as the mayor, and I think it, it behoves me to just drop the ball and not at least initiate more conversation, at least listen to, uh, Clico and listen to the attorney like we have scheduled meetings and see if we can maybe come to the agreement that we reached before or something similar. Uh, but to drop the ball and, and not move forward and, and wait another two years and, and put our potential crime prevention efforts at a, at a standstill, uh, I think it's, it's not wise as elected officials that, you know, we're here to make decisions, make decisions in the best interest of the people, and I think the best interest of people want us to continue to negotiate with Clico and see if we can come up with something that we agreed upon. And I'd appreciate if you continue those efforts.
So I would say I absolutely want the mayor to continue with his negotiations. Um, since the veto hit the paper and everything, I've had several calls from people saying that, one, they're glad that it was vetoed, and two, um, requesting that we not sign a 25-year agreement. Um, they've said that, that they feel like that's too long unless we, um, we put some sort of clause in there that says that if Clico decides to sell their company again, we can back up and look at whether or not we want to move forward with that company or look for services from another provider. So I just wanted to kind of, and I had asked about that in one of the questions that I had sent in, saying that we need to, we shouldn't just move forward with the 25 years unless we have an out if they decide to sell the company again. So someone actually also brought that to my attention, um, you know, from the calls that I received. So I'm just saying maybe we ought to add that to our negotiations as well. Uh, but again, I don't know that I'm like the mayor pro tem. I don't know that I think that there's a rush. I think we need to make sure that we do this and we get everything that we need for our citizens, and we do have a couple of years left. We have other ways of paying for a camera system, and so I don't believe that we should tie the two together. That's it.
Thank you. Bruceard, Councilman Bruceard. And then Councilman Lewis.
It's gonna be hard to ever replace Clico. It's gonna be hard with the infrastructure they own. I don't think any other company's gonna come and buy it out, you know, or change, we're gonna change out to somebody else. But keep, keep negotiating, Mr. Mayor, please, on our original contract. Somebody got it. They can give in if not all the things we asked for, three quarters of them. Let's see what happens, you know, if you don't mind, please, can we stick to the old agreement and see how close we can come to? And the civil service.
Not, not the old agreement.
But the service commissioner and all that, we're gonna be working on the last years. That's a year, and that's a fanning, but if we can get them to move at all, that, that's a big part too late on.
That's a separate issue too.
I know, separate issue. But, uh, that's, that's a, that's a long shot. So, but, uh, we've been knowing Clico for a lot, a lot of years. I don't know if we're gonna change anything. But, uh, I hope something comes to a stand where we can vote on another round of this right here.
Councilman Lewis.
Okay, Miss, Miss DeeDee Johnson, you did say unlike Mayor Pro Tem, right?
Yeah, I said, I, I don't agree.
Okay, I thought you said I'm like.
No, I said, no, no, no. I said I don't agree with, uh, the mayor pro tem, unlike him.
Okay, unlike.
Unlike him, yeah. No, no, unlike him.
Meaning you.
I'm sorry, that.
I said it. No, I, I believe that the order negotiation is realizing what you have to work with.
Mm-hmm.
And we do have time on our side. I think if we, you know, I, I think we, you know, make it seem like to Clico that, you know, hey, man, we gotta hurry up and get this done because, because of crime cameras. I think we lose our.
Our leverage.
Our leverage. Thank you. So I mean, you know, be, be expedient, be efficient, you know, but, but get what you can get. I mean, uh, we see now that, uh, you, 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 you won't let them just give you what they said they weren't gonna give you, so.
What this body votes on by majority is what I'm bound by, I mean.
Right, you know, I mean, I want what's best for this town, and I, I, I just, you know, I keep hearing the light's gonna go out. I don't think the light's gonna go out. I don't think no side wanna cut off the lights.
No, I don't think that either.
So.
That's not gonna happen.
Are not gonna get cut off. You know, CNN and, you know, even ESPN.
I like that.
Don't, don't be in town, you know. So I mean, I think we, uh, be expedient, be as, uh, and I'm thinking of this word, but it deals with take your time in negotiation. Uh, you know, you got time. We got time. At first, it was about the cameras, but again, cameras is a, it's a separate issue. And if we, we can find other ways to get, get cameras, uh, in the beginning, the cameras is great. Let's get the money and get the cameras, but do we still need cameras? Yes. Do we have ways to get cameras? I believe we do. So I mean, uh, you got two bargaining chips for citizens. That's cameras, and we got Clico. And both to be need, both we need, both we need.
Yeah, yeah. And look, the work that we did up here for three or four meetings did do some good. I mean, we moved the needle. We got some things that had we not, we did it as a discussion item, then we did our two meetings, uh, you know, through the ordinance process, and now we back again. So I'm not selling anybody short by any means, you know, the work that we did up here helped me to do my work, and, and we did get some, some concessions, and we did move the needle. Whether we moved it enough or not, well, you know, we back at it, but, uh, it, so I appreciate that very much.
One more thing. I did get a call about, uh, 25 years versus 10 years. And it was from somebody out of, out of our city that visited our, 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 um, council meeting. Very smart guy, and he said, man, he said 25 years is unheard of nowadays. I say, okay. And he just told me that. I'm not saying, you know, that I totally agree, but I respect his opinion because he's a very smart guy. Runs an multi-million dollar organization, but he called me and told me that.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, uh, I too spoke to somebody, um, that does, um, finances for a company, and he said also that 25 years is way too long to go, uh, with a contract like that. Um, and if you would, um, you should get more than that 1.5 if you go with the 25. That's what the person said, a financial person. Um, however, I have also spoken to somebody at Clico. He's a customer service representative for them, and, uh, he also said that they would like to continue negotiations. So I'm looking forward to it. I definitely would like to be included in the process if at all possible. Um, I did write all those letters, uh, sent to all the board of managers, as they're called, and all the CEO and several other people, including Mr. Swest and, um, the customer service. And I think we are going to get something out of this. Um, but we just need to take our time and, and hold fast, and I think they will come around. If not all the way, most of the way. So like I said, I'm looking forward to continuing the conversation with Clico.
I will set the first meeting up for you.
I'd like to be included as well.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was kind of thinking the, the three, three that voted no should go first, you know what I mean?
Big ol'.
Three amigos.
Well, I mean, the three people who voted no, so, uh, but I do plan on, I, I want to take them up on their idea because I think it's good. Uh, there are things that I hear in those negotiations that maybe y'all need to hear and vice versa. So my, my plan is to, you know, I don't need to do it tomorrow, but the plan is to set some meetings up until every council member has had time to, to meet with them, and, and we'll go from there and see, you know, what flesh is out. Um, I did let them know that, you know, don't bring back what didn't work, you know, we're gonna have to reinvent. Uh, we were stuck, uh, on this of the 200 lights that we wanted changed. And really, we're trying to get to how fast can our community have all LED lights?
Right.
You know, they, they say there's not a savings. We, we will talk about that some more, but an LED light costs $10 a month, and the old lights we have cost seven, and they're not coming off of that. That's one of the things that we will talk about. Um, are LED lights more efficient? Of course they are. But are they holding the company store philosophy that you can't pay the bill, that, you know, you, you'll never catch up? And the LED lights have charges on them that they put in place and were approved by the Public Service Commissioner? You know, that's a hump we need to get over. But regardless if it saves money or not, the LED lighting is a much better light.
Right.
And we were trying to say, how could we, six, seven years into a 25-year deal, feel comfortable that we had all LED lights? And that's one of the things why we, I pushed for 200 on top of the 300 to 400 that they changed because the lights break. So I did the math and said, boy, if we could get that, I think that'd put us at seven years. We, we walled in.
I think we were at five.
Yeah, maybe we're down.
By five years.
And so, uh, that's still a goal that we should try to reach, you know, um. So I think we pick up from where. The good thing is we have something we started with that we worked to and got to somewhere. So now the bar is raised from the minute we talking to them again, but I will see about their schedule to set those meetings up, and we'll go from there. Yes, ma'am.
I did, uh, when I, when I talked to the customer service, um, person, he did say that may have, uh, other ways, um, new technology in looking at, um, how they, they could tell if the lights were on or off.
That's coming. One thing they told me, the reason, and I'm gonna bring that out since you said it, the reason they were dead set on two hours a month, because they are gonna create a grid from what they're telling me with, that you can ride by, their people won't have to get out and read the pole number, won't have to get out and get the address, that they are looking at a, a system to map all the lights in a computer system that you just ride by and hit the button, which seems to make sense. I mean, we can find GPS. I can watch my police units on the GPS and see how fast they go and where they stopped and how long they stayed. You know, so it doesn't seem out of the realm that, that they could put something like that together. And they also mentioned that to me as well, and, and so that's, that's something. If we got that, that would be huge.
Yeah, well, for them.
It'd be good for us too, though, if we get our lights on.
I mean, it would be good for us only because the results would be our lights would be on, but it would be good for them.
I'm all about results. I didn't say it wouldn't be, but if the results are good for everybody, that's a win. That's a win.
Don't get me wrong. I agree. I'm just saying, that's not our problem. Our problem is the lights need to be on. That's it.
I understand. I don't need blood. I just need results. But it's all good.
Not looking for blood. I just, you know, that's not our problem.
Fred.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor, sorry.
It's okay. That's my name.
But. Um, I will say this, you know, we did vote four to three on this, but like you just said, what we voted for wasn't what came forward. So I appreciate you, I appreciate you standing up and not just signing that.
Close, don't cut it.
So, um, but yeah, I believe I, hey, continue the negotiation, get the most of it what we can get, and let's just keep working forward. So that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Last comment. I have another comment.
Oh, you have another comment? Okay. Uh, anybody, everybody spoken? Okay, back to Councilwoman Lebe.
I just want everybody, uh, all our constituents to know that we are also gonna continue, or we're gonna, um, continue to look at going before the Public Service Commission to have our rates adjusted, uh, in some way. So, uh, that fight is, is separate, but kind of part of it also. But that's a different fight, and we still working towards doing that also.
And we are setting up a meeting. We go through Jeff's research. We, I've already had one conversation with the lady. We're starting with the people that LMA recommended, that, and so workshops are gonna be held for that as well. It's a whole separate issue, but it doesn't mean they can't happen, you know.
Simultaneously.
Simultaneously, and so, uh, those meetings are gonna get set up pretty soon. We're gonna do that lunch and learn.
Yeah, I think it's 9:30 on the 16th.
Okay, good. Well, I know Sandra was making calls.
Three council members.
Yeah.
Okay, good. But I think that that's the next step for that, and, uh, you know, I'm wondering if we can tape it so the other council people can, uh, can hear it, you know. But I mean, I want to educate everybody on that. So, uh, but that's another, you're right. That's another, a whole nother issue, but at the same time, we can work on that one too.
Right.
Anybody else? And thank you all very much. So my first veto is upheld. Thank you for that. Uh, now we go to 5A.
Ordinance number 2023-05, an ordinance declaring certain New Iberia Police Department vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to a local police department at a cost not less than $23,000 in accordance with state law.
Bring it up now? Okay, we are gonna have to amend this, and I'll just be blunt. Our price is too high. Uh, people at first were very interested, and these exact same units, people are buying of, of those two Dodge Chargers. People are buying them for 17, okay? We started at 23 because I'm trying to get as much money as I can for the PD. Uh, the chief and I talked about it, and we knew we were on the high end, but we said, okay. We, we thought we had four different communities that wanted them, so we figured we had a product that was very much in demand. So we went with the high end. All four of them found units somewhere, other places, uh, you know, and, and got them for 16, 17. So we, we are gonna have to amend this, this price, and you'll see we have another car, because this was one of the charges. We have two of them. You'll see later in the meeting on the item 8D, we have the price listed on that one at 17 because we think that that's more realistic of the market. So with that, uh, do I amend it now, Jeff, or do we just have the public hearing, or how, how does that work? I want to do it the right way.
Well, I mean, at this point, we're just having the public hearing.
Okay, that's what I thought, so. It's not an ordinance yet, so when I break, but I wanted to explain, so. Okay, well then I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Thank you.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
Don't move.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Martin Lewis. Thank you all. 4B.
Ordinance number 2023-06, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental contract by and between the Department of Environmental Quality of the state of Louisiana and the city of New Iberia related to the city of New Iberia EVSE VW settlement electrical, electric vehicles charge station project.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed and a second Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing and seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Bruceard, Councilman Martin Lewis. Thank you. Now we move to 5C.
Ordinance number 2023-07, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and Metro Hospitality LLC related to the electrical vehicles charge station project.
Motion open?
Motion.
Uh, Councilman Martin Lewis and Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed. She got you on the second. Uh, is there anyone here to comment on this item? Hearing seen none? Motion to close our public hearings.
Don't move.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and who's the second? Uh, Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Thank you. All right, 5D.
Ordinance number 2023-08, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and Iberia Parish Government related to rabies control services within the city limits of New Iberia.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Move.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman David Broussard. Is there anyone here to comment on this item? Hearing and seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed and Councilman Martin Lewis. Thank you all. Uh, 5E.
Special ordinance number 2022-2023-12, amendment number 11, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect costs pursuant to the revised rabies control contract.
Motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Martin Lewis, Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Any public comment on this item? Seen none? Motion to close.
Motion.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Thank you all. 6A.
Ordinance number 2023-05, an ordinance declaring certain New Iberia Police Department vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to a local police department at a cost not less than $23,000 in accordance with state law.
We're gonna have to amend this one.
I'll make a substitute motion. That's the ordinance, read 17,000.
We have a substitute motion by the Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this substitute motion?
Um, one question.
Sure.
The, um, do you know if the vehicles that they're purchasing have the same kind of amount of mileage? I mean, are we, do we have, it looks, this is fairly low mileage.
They're both about the same.
Okay.
One of them, and we didn't think that added much value at this point. One of them has some pushbars on it. It looks more like a cop car. The other one looks a little more undercover to be working speed, but they, they're very similar. So we felt like they would be worth the same amount.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else? And with that, I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. The chief will be happy.
So if that's on a substitute motion.
Yes.
Then I think you need a vote on the motion, right?
Yes, this is to make the motion be the next motion on the floor. So now I need a motion on this new motion.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis. So what's on the floor now is the substitute motion passed to make a substitute motion. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem really already made it, and so it's, it, we made it a little ahead of the game, but it's, uh, it's to let me sell the car for $17,000.
All right.
Is there any discussion on this?
Nope.
Now I ask you to vote your machines. Now we can sell the car.
Thank you.
6B.
Ordinance number 2023-06, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental contract by and between the Department of Environmental Quality of the state of Louisiana and the city of New Iberia related to the city of New Iberia EVSE VW settlement, electrical vehicles charge station project.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed and a second by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item?
So can you tell me again why they actually are making it retroactive to July 1st of 2022? Because we lose eight months on the contract.
Which been going on that long, and I don't know why they wanted to keep it at that date, but, uh, they wanted to keep it at that date.
Okay, because.
I, I think this was supposed to have been done, to tell you the truth, but the fact that we didn't have any utilities out there, no parking, no, we had the property they asked us to put it on, and then when you looked at the requirements, like, where are you gonna park the car? Uh, and that's why we've cut the deal with the property owner next door, and we're doing it, but they kept the same date, so.
Okay.
It's less time we gotta maintain it, but on the flip side, I want to keep them.
Right.
So I am sure we'll be able to enter into something again once that time is up, and because these are the first two charging stations we have in town, I'm gonna make sure that, Lane and I have kind of talked about that, we'll mark it on the calendar early enough to say we want to renew it. I'm also like to find a way to put some downtown, but this was, this is the start.
Okay. I was just wondering, because it, I mean, we're gonna lose eight months, so.
Right, right.
Okay.
Anybody else? Can I ask? So please vote your machines. Thank you. And now that we putting these in, I do notice a few Teslas around town, and I'm seeing a few more cars, so it's, it's encouraging. Uh, 6C.
Ordinance number 2023-07, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and Metro Hospitality LLC related to the electrical vehicles charge station project.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed and Councilman Martin Lewis. Is there any discussion? This is our parking place.
This is the Hampton Inn.
Yes. Any discussion? Hearing none? Please vote your machines. Good, we can finally, we can finally sign these papers. Whew. Been a bit of a trip. Uh, 6D.
Ordinance number 2023-08, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and Iberia Parish Government related to rabies control services within the city limits of New Iberia.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman David Broussard. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Just a brief comment for the council. Um, I, I have been getting a little feedback, and it still hasn't improved, very little improvement so far, so, you know, I'm, I'm supporting this initially, but I do think that this is gonna come back in a, earlier than late. I hope not, but the mayor, I told the mayor that, you know, it's, it's, it's not improving like we thought it would so far. So if there's solutions out there, be thinking about it.
Yeah, I think we all realize that, but I don't think we really, we were put in a position, at least for now, that we don't have much of a choice. So we spend a lot more money, and we have 15 dog cages instead of what we had before, and we have five cat cages, and we go from there. Do I think this is the end-all be-all? It's a two-year deal? Um, I do think that you are 100% right. We will continue to have discussions. We will continue, uh, to try to find ways to improve those services, and, uh, I don't think this is the last that we will have to visit about, uh, you know, animal control. But it's a start. I mean, it's better than what we had prior. Yes, ma'am.
I guess I just want the public to understand that just because you call and say you, there's some stray dogs hanging around, doesn't mean we're gonna be able to go and pick them up, because if the 15 kennels we have for dogs are full, there's nothing we can do until those dogs are either adopted or euthanized.
Correct.
So please don't get upset. I mean, we're doing everything we can for what, you know, we have right now, but there's gonna be a better solution in the future, but we just need the public to understand that they may not see the improvements that they're looking for.
Thank you. That's a good point, because that's, it happens every day.
Exactly.
We get calls every day, and many days they can pick them up, but there are times that people call back frustrated, or they call animal control and they say, you know, all the city kennels are full. Now we'll have a few more. Now we'll have a few more, this, this go round.
Right.
We need to get this signed so that it takes effect. Yes, sir.
So my question is, out of the fifteen kennels, are we ever, as far as city residents, are we ever turned down because of, there's a parish animal from outside the city limits in that kennel?
Trust Dustin, trust.
Trust.
No, I'm asking, like, it's a legitimate question, because.
Question, I'm picking on you. We, I asked the same question. Am I, am I sure that those dogs always come from the city? They tell me that those dogs always come from the city.
So we have fifteen kennels dedicated just to.
And five cat kennels, and now supposed to put anything from the parish in there?
Okay.
Uh, you know, uh, but we had that discussion, because as we negotiated, we, we, Ricky came on the Zoom call.
I thought I heard in discussion before that come up as far as.
Well, from this contract forward that we are involved in, we have fifteen spots, and I am, uh, there for the city.
So one more thing.
Sure.
So we keep talking about a, a solution later on, because now is not the right time, I get that, totally get it. But later on, how are, so the city taxpayers pay into this system?
We pay, we pay the, the health unit tax.
Correct.
The parish takes, as Lainey and I extrapolated, the parish takes three hundred thousand dollars of the health unit money and subsidizes animal control.
Okay.
So they don't count that money when we are negotiating, but it actually happens. On top of that, we are paying a hundred and something thousand dollars now, uh.
Forty-two.
Hundred and forty something, almost a hundred fifty thousand dollars. That gives us fifteen dog kennels, five cat kennels, and half the salary of a dog catcher who will work in the city. Now originally, in our first negotiations, that person was only to be used in the city. Well, that's not the way it is now, it's, it's that we share them, okay? So I was hoping that that person would build a relationship with my city PD, with my residents, with the people that often have the same problem, and then you can track it and probably go to some stiffer fines and ramp up these people when they're repeat offenders. So the same person would be great, you know, to be able to build that rapport, so I'm hoping that still happens. But that's where we are for now, so it is the hundred and fifty thousand plus the health unit money.
So the question I'm.
But plus the, the additional twenty-eight thousand for that person, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's in addition to the hundred and forty-two.
It's in the one forty-two.
That's in the one forty-two, cause it don't sound like that's the way it read.
Yeah, it's half the, half of the salary and the kennels. It's not in there?
Uh, that's not the way it's in there.
We listed it separate.
Okay, it's one forty-two plus twenty-eight.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But it's listed in there, it's listed in there, but it's in.
It's one forty-two plus twenty-eight.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And the reason it was split out.
Because we're not paying it till they hire somebody.
Exactly.
That was, uh, that was Mayor Protimbri, he was like, wait a minute, it was lumped together, said, how do we know when they're gonna hire somebody? Which was a great point, that's why we split it apart.
Right, I just want the public to know, in addition.
Plus three hundred thousand.
Right.
The reason why I'm staying what I'm saying is because when the time does come, if we had to do some sort of shelter, when we can, the money that the city residents are putting into the system, how is that gonna be, how is that gonna be factored in?
I don't know how I go to the parish and say, you know, don't charge me that health unit tax that, that's in there forever that the citizens pass. I don't know, but, but that is certainly one of our questions, because I don't, they can't keep, if we would do our own, and our choices are pretty, uh. No, yeah, they are, they are, they, we only have a couple of choices.
Right.
Okay, they're gonna come to us, I can tell you what they are, I'm a crystal ball, but you know, I talk, they are gonna come to us at some point, because their facility is falling apart. Their facility gets written up, their facility is not some top-notch facility, it's just not.
It's got written up since negotiations.
I know that. So they're gonna come to us and say, we're gonna build a new, you know, and they need the two years to get their act together, they're gonna build a new facility. So we're gonna come up with a choice of do we put up money to be part of that facility? And we have this, uh, it ain't duplication of services, cause they're not giving us much services, I don't like that phrase, because you gotta do something to get that. But anyway, we, we, let's say it's a two million dollar facility.
And it's not consolidation.
No, it's not. So we put up a million dollars, and they put up a million dollars, and we build a facility, and then on top of that, they're gonna wanna charge us the same fees they're charging us now, and that rate will continue to climb, because they're gonna say, you still gotta pay for your spots, you still gotta pay to feed the dogs, you still gotta pay to house them. So we're gonna look at that option, not ruling it out. The other option is, we do our own thing. As you know, I sketched one out, I've built them before, we looked at the property the city owns at, uh, the Pepper, across from the Pepperplex, so we would have a place, we'd certainly have a place to put our sewer, because the plant's right there, um, you know, so it could work. You'd have a place to adopt the dogs, because you could bring them to the Pepperplex, I mean, it could actually work. But that's more money, and that's total responsibility. Not, not chucking that, I mean, that's why we built a police department, but we will have two paths in two years. So we, you know, budget time doesn't come for a while, although we start working on our budgets internally in June, and bring them to y'all a few months early, like we always do, and we work through them. So the next two budget cycles, we will have to be conscious of the fact that we could have to do something in two years, um, and I think either way, we're gonna have to do something.
Do we know?
But we don't know what it is yet.
Do we know how we handled it when we did have a dog pound? Because at one point, the city had their own dog pound.
City had a dog pound for many years, then they combined with the parish, and it didn't work, cause it's always been one of my examples, I'm not a consolidation guy, it's always been one of my examples of how you're gonna consolidate, when they tried to do the police department, it says, yo, couldn't even do the dog catcher together. So they tried this one time before, and it did not work.
No, but do we know how we handled it, I mean, as far as the tax and all of that, when we had our own dog pound? Can we look back and historically and find out how we handled it? Did we pay the parish the tax money back in those days as well?
They just didn't send it to, we, I will look that up for sure for you, but I, I think it just didn't go to there, I don't know where it went.
Okay.
And at one time, the health unit tax did a lot more, there was a nurse, there was services, in other words, those things have gone somewhat by the wayside in the parish. So at one time, I don't think they were tapping that health unit money, because it went to a bigger health unit.
Right.
Um, and the city brunt, had the brunt of the whole bill, but I don't think it was funded, I think it was just funded out of the general fund, but, but we can look that up.
Yeah.
Remember it was on Amaldal across from Taco Bell?
I know, cause I could hear from my house.
You could, you ride on Amaldal and you'd see all the dogs.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So once we go our separate ways, cause I think that's what's gonna have to happen.
It could.
Um, I feel like the city does need to be in control of their own situation, that way we don't have any other mishaps or any other negotiation issues, um, we just kinda have to do it, that's what I'm thinking. But when that happens, if it happens, um, are we just able to get our health unit tax? Like have the parish give it back?
No, I don't think, I don't think, I mean, we can try, or we can.
It's connected as parish-wide.
But it's a parish-wide tax.
Okay.
I don't know when it renews.
Well, that's the other thing too. That's the other thing, you know, when it, if it wouldn't renew, or if we could change it then, you know?
That's the only way to change.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir, you, wait, are you finished?
I'm finished, yes.
Yes, sir.
So originally.
Be cutting now.
No, I did not, I was waiting my turn, so. I don't cut in front of nobody. So listen, um, when originally, when the, the city took over the parish, they funded out the royalty fund, cause the royalty fund was doing so good with the off-field, so they backfilled it with the royalty fund, and so they, that's how they negotiated a deal with the original shelter. So that's what they're doing, that's how they did it, but to build a shelter, the cost is costing us now, and two million dollar shelter is actually cheaper if we could get the services now than build our own shelter. But obviously, we're not gonna get the service that we all expect. But I think as council members, we should be proactive and be honest with our constituents and say, look, this is what we have, this is what we provide, but you need to do your part too.
Agreed.
You know, if we don't send that message to the constituents and say, you need to do your part, we can't solve all your problems, then we defeating the purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, so I think that's the message we need to send out.
Well, we talk about a spay and neuter program, which would be huge, but it doesn't pay to pass one in the city if the parish isn't gonna do one. And we would, that would be something that we would both need, because those dogs are coming down the railroad track, I mean, we watch them. They, I get some coyotes swimming across the bay and coming in my yard. We have, uh, they're the ones that are constantly on Jane Street and going downtown, they come from the old Sugar Mill property and go down the railroad track, I mean, you know, they're coming from all over.
Right.
It's not just the ones that you and I always see on Hopkins Street, you know, those brown ones?
In Weston.
That we see in the Weston or Field Street all the time? Uh, it's not just those. So I do think that if we did something, which I do want to flesh out and look at doing, but we'd have to say, we'll pass it contingent upon the parish passing it.
Right.
Um, cause we will be asking, we will be forcing our citizens to do their part.
So what you're saying, any ideas welcome at this point?
Oh, any idea, I'll take anything, cause when, this isn't going away, I mean, we all know, and that's why we're spending the time on it, it's a problem that we are gonna have to further address.
Can we at least make sure that the dogs that we put in the shelter get spayed and neutered?
I think they always do, like when they get adopted out, because you know, the one thing that, you know, I don't wanna kick them in the, one thing that they do well, they spend a lot of time and money to ship those dogs up north where the dogs have, are much more controlled, their ordinances are much tighter, and so I am amazed at the number of dogs that get flown out of New Iberia and Acadiana and go up north and, and get adopted. So they are really trying to do that and not euthanize them. Uh, I do know they have to euthanize some, so they either are put down, are spayed and neutered and adopted.
Okay.
Yeah, they're only, uh, spayed and neutered once they're adopted. Like if they're never adopted, they're just in there, they're not gonna be spayed or neutered.
Yeah, they can't do anything, they just stuck in limbo.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
And any, we don't have any timeframe of how long it could take for a dog to be adopted versus euthanized.
No, and I've asked that, and I'm gonna continue to ask that, and once this new contract is in place, I hope for further communications so that I can understand that, uh, because they do, I don't know how long it takes to, to adopt, I don't know what the cycle is.
Okay.
I know that they can only kill, I mean, it's blunt, but it's the truth, they have to kill ten percent or less to be classified as a no-kill shelter, so they're never gonna kill more than ten percent.
Okay.
And how they work the adoptions and sit there and work the math, I'm not, I don't really know how the rhythm of it works yet, but I'm sure I'm gonna find out.
Okay.
Anybody else?
When you do ask for the information, it would be a piece of information asked, I mean, how many dogs you picked up in the city, you know, get that information so we can track it.
I would like to do that, it's always gonna be fifteen dogs probably, but at least I'll know when, at least I'll know when they're through the cycle, when did they get adopted, those kinda things.
I mean, fifteen, 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 then you gotta ask questions.
Yeah, 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 if it's the same fifteen, we got a problem. All right, anybody else?
And they, and they're reporting, I mean, if we have twelve dogs this month, and, you know, we only have three open. So we need to know when they're full, like.
That's what I was hoping, I, I'm hoping that as we pay every month and do this, that we're gonna get a report back, and I will be able to know, like I wanna be able to come to the council meeting and say, okay, you know, our, our cages are full.
Yeah.
Because at least we let our citizens know, don't expect anything to happen this month, because, you know, they're full, and once we understand the cycle of this, then we'll be able to know, hurry up and, then it's gonna be a race, okay? It's gonna be, everybody's gonna be trying to call, because we're gonna have openings, but it's okay, I mean, at least we're dealing with our problems.
Right.
I see that coming too. You know, anyway.
Okay, lucky.
Well then, no further discussion? I'd ask you to please vote your machines? Thank you. Onto resolutions, Madam Clerk, seven A. Oh, we didn't?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, six C.
Six C.
Going too fast.
Special ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three dash twelve, amendment number eleven, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect costs pursuant to the revised rabies control contract.
We do need the money, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, motion by Mayor Protimbri Gonsalas and a second by Councilman Marla Lewis. This is the money to fund our project, uh, with the parish, any discussion? Seen none, please vote your machines? Thank you, Lainey, that was, uh, no money, no go. Now we move on to seven A.
Resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen, supporting the dedication of Amaldal Drive as Veterans Memorial Drive.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A whole bunch of them, uh, Councilman Dustin Swier, and who is second?
I'm not positive.
Councilman Marla Lewis. Is there any discussion on this motion?
So now what? We do this and send it to the state?
Uh, yes, yes.
And then they decide, yes or no?
Yeah, or the, the Martin Luther King, when that's what we did, yeah, so they will, we bring it, and, and it's not changing any addresses, it's not, it's just dedicated, it's just some signs off to the side. I don't know where the parish is with this, I'm not sure, um, but we'll do it, we'll communicate back with Troy Como who brought this, which I thought was a great idea on his part, and then, uh, if the state says it's a go, I'm not waiting on anybody, I'll get public works to make the signs and put them up.
Okay, so the state could tie it down?
They might wanna have a ceremony.
Oh, we can do that too, but, but, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna wait, I will coordinate it as quick as possible, and what I'm saying is, public works through their budget, I have no problem that they put the signs in the city.
Is there a chance the state would say no?
No, I don't think so.
That's what I was worried about.
I mean, it's not, it's kind of a no-brainer, so I wouldn't think so.
Real easy.
They bump them, they bump them, you know, they put them as a group and approve them as groups.
Okay.
A few all over the state, so that's what they're doing.
Good deal.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Seven B.
Resolution number twenty-three dash nineteen, authorizing the mayor to execute documentation in connection with the national opioid litigation.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, and Jeff, can you tell us what the latest is on this?
Well, there's some settlements, and if we wanna participate, we have to say yes, so we need to opt in, I don't know what the amounts are, I don't know if Laney was able to, she did a lot of detective work on this.
On you.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
So it looks like this is just Walmart, CVS, and Walgreens. Are there any other pharmacies that we could expect to come up in the future, are we, we're not releasing the other pharmacies, just these three, correct?
No, just those three.
And then it doesn't even look like Walmart's asking for a release, it looks like they're just, Lisa didn't say it was, uh, participation in release form like the others did. Which I was surprised.
I'm sure they will get released.
Yeah, so it says, it just says subdivision participation form, and the other one says subdivision participation form and release form.
Well, assume they're gonna get released.
Okay, but, I mean, this won't prevent us from getting settlements from any other pharmacies. Okay, good, okay, 'cause there were others involved.
Yes, no, I know.
No, they're gonna be related entities in Walmart and things like that, but no.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, and we'll keep you posted on that.
Well, could I ask one question about that before we move on?
No, we voted, no.
No, I mean, the vote's gonna stand, but, um, depending on what the amount of money we get from this settlement, from these three pharmacies. Do we know how that money has to be spent in our community?
Fighting opioid addiction.
Not yet specifically.
But they didn't really say yet, but.
Okay.
That's what Jeff and I feel that it's gonna be, so maybe something through law enforcement, you know, something through our PD that we could funnel some money there. And if it's a good amount of money, then we could take some money out of the PD budget and do something else, uh, you know, we just gotta wait and see.
So let me email our people, we're supposed to be working on this for us, and I'll ask them how much, when, and for what purpose.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, I I get that we might wanna give some to the PD, but it would be nice if we had something to help with prevention or.
Yeah, well, and I'm just saying, like, we're doing our, uh, anti-violence campaign, i- i- it's running through them, because they're part of it.
Right.
So we might have something that we want to do that is conjunction with them, it might run through them, but it also might be a PR campaign, it might be education, it might be. You know, there's other things that we could, other outreach we could do.
Right.
It might run through them, just because they're our arm of law enforcement, but, uh, we would have, you know, a PR campaign, we would have other people involved, you know, depending on what we do.
Or prevention, like, maybe sending them off to, instead of sending them to jail, sending them to a facility.
Yeah, I'm not, uh.
I mean, just to get them cleaned up, you know?
Yeah, and that might be an option, I don't know.
Yeah, that's why I was just wondering what the money can be used for.
But we all, we talk about that, because this has been going on for a while, and we're like, okay, what are we gonna do with this? You know.
Okay, well.
It's never, money's never a bad thing, so we'll figure it out.
Okay, just, I just wanna make sure we clean, help people get better.
Okay, that's fine, well, a- a- anything we do comes to the council, so. We'll have time to have our input. Anybody else? Good, now we move on to. No, we already voted on it, that was a question after the vote, uh, now we go to seven C.
Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by in between the State of Louisiana Division of Administration. And the, and the City of New Iberia related to Water Sector Program two, round two grant.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed, and this is the grant that we've gotten from the state, and it's backwards, now we're doing the paperwork. In other words, they gave us the money, now we backtracking. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I wish that would happen more often.
Uh, you, you and me both, sir.
Oh, wait, I did have a question, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so it says something about the City of New Iberia hereby agrees that the responsibility for payment of any taxes from the funds, uh, should be paid by the City of New Iberia. I mean, are there normally taxes on this? I mean, I thought this was tax-free money.
And I, and when we spend money, we don't pay taxes.
Yeah, I was just surprised to see that.
I can ask.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, I mean, it's in the contract, so I wanted to ask about it.
Okay. Anybody else? And please vote your machines. Alright, seven D.
Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-one, authorizing city officials slash employees to sign the request for payment forms in connection with projects associated with the Water Sector Program Round Two Grant.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed, is there any discussion on this item? More paperwork.
Yep.
Alright, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven E.
Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two, approving change order number two for the City of New Iberia Asphalt Overlay Project. And authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Council, Councilman, Councilman Marlon Lewis and Mayor Proton Rick Gosselin, this is only time, in this instant, it's not money, it's just time.
Right.
Just to be clear, 'cause that's not always the case, is there any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
You know what my question is. When are you gonna get to Rouge de Verge? Oh, and Front Street.
Uh, so basically, we're trying to wrap up the streets between Center Street and Lower Street, that's where they're concentrated right now, that's Bank, Henshaw, Hacker. We have Charles Street and, uh, and and Street.
Yeah.
As soon as they get all those wrapped up, then they're gonna move and close out the project on the north side of the bayou. Realistically, we're looking, May.
May?
We're already in March, they just started patching Bank Street, we have five or six streets to patch and then overlay, that's about two months worth of work. So, and then they'll move to that side and hit everyone on that side, the Endes, Murray Street, Front Street, Lawrence Street, uh. I might be missing one.
That's not, that's not already done by May.
No, they're gonna move to that side of town by May, I mean.
Assuming the weather's good.
Yeah, June, July, we're probably gonna wrap up the project for the asphalt.
Okay.
Now, the concrete project just started, and that's at least twelve months, you know, that's probably more than twelve months, we've spent a whole month on a half a street. So, uh, it goes a lot slower for concrete.
Okay.
But, uh, the asphalt, by the end of the midsummer, I think we'll be done.
Okay, gotcha.
So give us update on costs.
So, I I ran a forecast, we're running over right now what's completed, uh, it's hard to say where we're gonna end up exactly. Uh, because, I mean, everything's by the unit, but we're probably about eighty-five thousand over budget on what's completed. It's seven million dollars, almost seven million dollar job, so, I mean, it's really, that's within a one percent margin, which is pretty close. Um, now, we still have some big streets to finish, we may come under some of those, so we may have some savings there, our additional services are running quite a bit under budget. So that's additional money you'll have to.
And and we had a little money left.
Yeah.
That we have held in reserve, just, I mean, it's only a twelve, I say only, it's the biggest one the city's done in one lick that we were able to bond, it's twelve point five million. It's not enough, as we all know, that's gonna do twenty percent of our streets, and only twenty were good before that, and that leaves sixty, and, you know. We are contemplating how we are going to attempt to come back to the voters again, because we don't have a choice.
Right.
And you you want it to speed up, and I I I admire you for that, on the flip side, when it's over and people realize the amount of streets that aren't done. Uh, we we have to come up with a solution, but, uh, we do have some money so that these overages at least will be covered. Because we budgeted eleven point five, and we had twelve point five.
Always have a contingency.
John and I said from the beginning, we need a contingency, as you know, some roads, this, the bases were worse, uh, we've had some, you know, issues along the way. Which I think will continue, because it's been so long since we've had a road program. So, anyway, but we have a contingency, so I'm not worried that we might eat that money up, or we would want to have done some additional streets. But on the flip side, we'll cover our cost on our twelve point five and do what we projected to do. But we are gonna have to have some heart-to-heart discussions on where we go next, or we just do like every other administration and do one round of roads and, you know, say I'm done. Which I just don't think is acceptable, because we wouldn't be in the shape we're in now if people had come up with, you know, some other solutions, anyway.
Now, towards the end of the project, we will be coming back with, that's when the dollar value change orders, 'cause we're gonna have to balance this project.
I know that.
We keep track of the quantities and the costs on a daily basis, but, you know, at the end of it, we have to do what we call an adjustment of accounts.
Some kind of reconciliation of everything.
It's gonna be a a a cost sheet for every street, it's gonna show you exactly where we budgeted, what we spent, and then we'll reconcile and we'll balance out the job at the end. So you know where your costs really are.
Good.
So.
Exactly, what are you gonna do on Bank Avenue?
Right now, they are patching the street, so basically, they are sawcutting around, we we go out, we mark the patches, they saw cut around them. They excavate the patches and they backfill them with asphalt, a structural patch. Once that's completely done, they're gonna go and they're gonna mill, what we call mill, the et, the goutalons. And we'll do some profile milling where where the burrow's really bad, we've had to do some extra milling on some other streets, 'cause just the surface is just deteriorated on us. Uh, once all that prep work's done, they'll have some curb they gotta replace, they'll get the curb replaced, and once all that's finished. They will overlay the street with, uh, two inches of new overlay material. Uh, and then after that's done, then they'll come back and put the striping on, but that's not gonna probably be till the end of the job, when they have just about all of them finished. Uh, 'cause it's a subcontract that comes and does that, and, I mean, he just, he rolls through town very, very quickly. And he can, he can stripe a street in a couple hours, you know, so he needs a lot of work ahead of him to keep himself busy for a week. So, uh, but we're going from Saint Peter Street to Admiralty, so we're doing that whole stretch, so probably the the longest street in the project.
Wait a minute, you're not going all the way to Main?
No, ma'am.
You do realize from from Saint Peter to Main is really bad?
Yeah, I try, I turn on it every day.
So how we didn't put that part in there?
It's by district, the district line, actually, the district line is the railroad tracks, we stretched it to Saint Peter Street, because it would be silly to go not on the other side.
Okay, that's in my district, so I know I didn't say we don't do that part. I thought we were going from Main all the way to Admiralty on Bank, I mean, that's ridiculous. We need some of that extra money to go and finish that.
Let's hope we have it.
No, we got it.
We got it now.
I know, but that, I mean.
I don't disagree, we're gonna have that, you're gonna see that in all the districts, I mean, we charged him with pick the worst streets and do the worst streets in each district. And I I'm, I realize that, you and I were having a conversation about Ann Street, which I wanted to explain Ann Street, how they're doing it, because some people.
Yeah, I was gonna ask him about that in a minute.
But you're doing Ann Street, and then all those little streets that aren't being addressed, at that tie-in, and even the rest of those little streets are really in bad shape. But every district, I I don't think our connections are gonna line up in many instances where we're gonna stop, because it wasn't the worst street in the district.
Agreed.
I'm hoping that we do have, I mean, I'm not trying to spend the extra million dollars because we have it, but part of that money, I am hoping, once we reconcile and know where we at. Is to run around and do exactly that, clean up little tie-ins, clean up little edges, because I know we're gonna have them in every district.
I get that, however, we're talking about one block.
Yeah.
On Bank Street, which is a heavily trafficked street.
Disagree with you, I'm not saying I don't wanna do it.
Doesn't make any sense that we don't finish that thing.
I don't disagree, and I can tell you that as the streets go on, we're gonna have a list of probably four or five of those. And I would like to get them done, I don't, I don't disagree at all, that's what I'm hoping, we have money left to go and do that, because it's gonna happen. And the amount of calls we're gonna get when this is over of streets that people thought we were gonna do, that, you know, I put the list out from the very beginning, but you can, you can wait for it.
Alright.
We're only doing twenty percent?
Somehow that, I didn't get that message that we are not going all the way to Main Street. I, I thought we were going all the way to Main Street, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me that we're not going all the way to Main Street, we're gonna leave one block of this terrible street. Makes no sense.
I have people calling me, the Charles Streets one, I have people calling me because we're not doing all the Charles Streets.
I know.
I have a bunch of streets that we are, St. Jude, we're we're not doing, we stop it by the church. I mean, we only have.
On on the other side, 'cause I'm District Three.
The other side.
But I know, we're not even, I know we're not going all the way from Robinson to Persian Street.
Right.
But that is not as bad as where you are right here between Saint Peter and Main, on Bank Street.
We have twelve point five million, that's all we have.
Okay.
We got, hopefully, we have enough.
We, uh, we need to look at the plan again, because this makes no sense.
But I'm not changing it, because I can't, then I then I sure I'd change somebody else, I mean, you're gonna see, each district is gonna have some areas that we are gonna wish we could do. And maybe we get a chance to do them. Or maybe we come with another solution, which we had one, and it was not, and it was no new tax burden, and and that's why we tried to do it, at the timely manner that we tried to do it. People like Brian didn't want it, uh, what you gonna do?
But but it might be a good selling point when we're making back, we finish, you know, finish Bank Street if we get enough additional money.
Well, we gotta do more than that.
Okay, well, I mean, I get that we, 'cause, I mean, we need a maintenance pro- uh, program, 'cause if these, these streets are gonna start falling apart in a few years if we don't have a maintenance program. So that's another reason for the tax, or the not new tax, whatever, but the fact is, is that.
I don't disagree, I mean, I don't disagree, but I'm just, I share your frustration, but you're gonna have that, by the time we finish the road program, there's gonna be somebody in every district that has no. Something didn't get connected like they thought.
Okay, no offense, Dee, but why you, why did you go all the way to Admiralty then?
I went by his recommendations, he picked the worst streets.
I appreciate that.
And I'm not throwing him under the bus, but his chore was, we knew from the day one, we don't have enough money. So he did the worst streets in each district and the worst areas of each street.
I mean, everything was rated by district.
So.
By rating, I mean, that's how we started.
The people before us who didn't take care of the streets.
I mean, look, look Dustin.
We have a street program for fourteen years. I got the finances straight as quick as I could.
You think you feel bad, look at Dustin, we had to take Pollard off the street, 'cause the sewer line's collapsing, uh, I mean.
Can I get his money?
He's hoping he's gonna have the money to do it.
Can I get your money?
Ain't no money to give. I mean, no, they're gonna be catchalls, I agree, I'm not, but I mean.
No, it's not perfect, it's not perfect.
Unbelievable, okay.
Okay, and I was still supposed to have.
Okay, one at a time, yes, ma'am?
I was still supposed to have the floor.
Yes, ma'am, I'm bringing it back to you.
Everybody just took it.
I know, I'm bringing it back to you.
I'm sorry. I'm being nice.
Thank you. You brought it up, though.
Hang on, one sec. You you're gonna get it, but you did have the floor.
Yeah, I know.
We just.
District Four.
Became a free-for-all.
That's where it started, uh, in District Four, and then May came. And it didn't, 'cause Bank Street is pretty much the only street that's left really in District Four to complete.
Well, you have Henshaw, Henshaw Alley.
No, no, that's not District Four.
What about Hacker?
That's my street, that's my district.
That's Dee's.
So I got, I don't remember where the lines, all the lines are.
Yeah, the lines are different, sometimes it's half of the street, you know.
Bank Street, before, when you get to, uh, Dale Street, the side going toward Admiralty is hers, the side going to Main Street is mine.
Got it, got it, got it.
Yeah, so, pretty much District Four was, was, you know, being done at the beginning, and then in May, it changed to do those streets by the schools. Then next thing we know, you're up, you know, in different areas, you're in District One, you're in District Two, and that's okay too. But now, Bank Street is the only one left, Bank Avenue is the only one left in District Four. So how did that come about, I just wonder?
So, I mean, that that's, we don't control what the contractor goes to, he makes the decisions, it's his job to plan and schedule his work.
But what they were trying to do early on is they were trying to, uh, tackle all the reconstructions. Because that's a completely different construction process, requires different crews, different equipment, so they started in your district, and you had a lot of reconstructions. And they were really trying to get those done, so they also also had a change in management, the project manager left and another one came in. So he kinda saw things a different way, and the companies kinda came together, how are we gonna tackle this project, and they came up with a different process, and that was, unfortunately, that was about that time. So, but when they started bouncing around, moving to other districts, it's because they were trying to get all the reconstructions, uh, taken care of way in the beginning of a project. Which they did, so, I mean, that's kinda how that happened, uh, you know, they just decided to change their their scheduling. And try to get some different process done, so, uh.
'Cause at this time, we didn't even get any little nice door hangers, like.
They didn't put them back out?
No.
Okay, so I gotta have a talk with the former.
No, like they did in, in May of last year, everybody got a door hanger, and, you know, everybody was expecting it to start. This time, it's a surprise.
Uh, I will get with those, them, 'cause they're supposed to reissue those.
You finished, Ms. Ledbetter?
Well, I can talk until the mayor comes back. No, I, I'm done, I think, he answered my question, thank you.
Mr. Bruce, all right?
Saint Mary's Street, at the railroad track, four railroad tracks, never got a good answer from anybody, maybe you can give it to me?
Okay.
Who's in charge of in between them tracks on Saint Mary's Street?
So, we are gonna overlay between, there's, there's a wide section, but there's a rare narrow section that in great shape, we're not gonna touch that. But we are gonna overlay the wide section, uh, and between the tracks, and we're gonna, they they mill tie-ins where they're flush with the tracks, we don't have big bumps.
I'm glad to hear that.
So that that will get an overlay in between.
Thank you, buddy, couldn't get an answer from anybody, talked to railroad people, they know, they know what it's up. I appreciate your help on that.
I'll leave no comment about the railroad people.
Saint Mary's Street, Mr. Mayor, if I not find they're on the railroad track on Saint Mary's Street, he's gonna do in between them. I didn't realize who handled the road right there.
Okay.
On the railroad behind over there.
Okay, good. Question, yes, sir?
Mayor, you, I'm sorry.
I'm finished.
You're saying that a a lot of the roads that have been repaired, those side roads, kinda like, you can notice, like, it's still bad going up into those side roads. You're saying that one of the focuses, if there's extra money, is to clean that up as well, right?
Hopefully, intersections and little bitty areas, like, as, uh, Councilwoman pointed out, that little one-block stretch, so hopefully, we have some money left. We were not gonna have enough money to go and tackle a huge, big roads left, I really don't believe that, but my hope is, we have enough money to clean up some of those intersections. And areas where there, you know, one-block gap. And we will rely on them to help us with that, as we did, 'cause that took all the politics out of it, we just picked the worst streets and went with them. Same thing when we come back with the money we have left, we will, I will ask them to emphasize, and I would think y'all would want that. Let's do, you know, as many of these low, little gap areas that we can. And based on how much money we have. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, did you price out, would it be to repair that apron on Darby Lane?
I did, but I'm waiting on the contractor, see, with all the changes in the industry, their pavement marking price. They can't hold on the change order. So, it's about forty grand, you know, it's not cheap. 'Cause you, the problem with that, you have a little bit of patching to do, but you're gonna have to mill out that whole area and make a tie-in away from the intersection. You're gonna have to get back to something good, so, when I ran out the square footage, and it's, it's about, on the construction side, it's about thirty-seven thousand. But, I mean, then you have your other costs that'll go with that as well, so, you're looking at about forty thousand bucks, you know, on a rough estimate to to redo that intersection.
Okay.
Um, I did run the numbers, I just didn't submit it, because I'm waiting on the guy to give me the updated pavement marking, uh, cost.
Okay.
Cause they're holding it for the project, 'cause, I mean, that's what they bid, but their subs, the price of the materials have just gone through the roof the last year. So if it, if they, if you give them a change order to do additional work, you know.
It's not gonna be the same unit price.
Those unit prices, they won't be able to hold, now, the rest of the stuff, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, well, they have a contract, they have to hold the rest of it.
Saying, I like, the asphalt prices and stuff are still good, but it's just the pavement marking prices have have gone up quite a bit.
Good to know.
So, but once I get that, I will submit that formally to y'all.
Okay, thank you, now, is that included in all this other stuff that we're doing right now, or is that something?
That was not included, that's, that's something that, it's kinda like Bank Street, it's kinda like, in other words, we are gonna have those, and that's what I keep saying. And we're not gonna move on them until we, we can't really till the end, 'cause it won't be fair. In other words, we can't just grab one and say, I'll go do yours, and hey, I'll go do yours, and then, okay, now we out of money. I mean, we'll have to wait and analyze that at the end of how much money we have left.
Okay.
I mean, we did everything evenly through the districts, and I think we're gonna have to continue on that path, you know.
So, when you say at the end, do you mean after the concrete project, 'cause he just said it's over twelve months?
Yeah, it's gonna be a while, we only have so much money, if we start pulling money now out of what we don't know in our reserve, we that's, we can't do that. I mean, we're gonna have to wait till the end, because every district could end up with some area that they don't like, or that should be done.
No, I've just meant timeframe, um, after the concrete project, that means that we're talking.
Yes, ma'am.
More than a year from now.
Yes, ma'am.
Realistically correct.
Yeah.
We figured the concrete project was about a twelve-month project, you know, depending upon weather and everything else. That, that's a little more weather-dependent on, uh, construction than asphalt, you know, asphalt, you know, they, they, the weather really doesn't shut them down, except the day it rains. Uh, concrete, you know, you could get a situation where we might be down for a few days, so it moves a lot slower.
Can't get the truck there.
As much as I have to get the city to patch that apron, I mean, does it end up costing a lot? I just don't know much how much that material costs, I'm assuming it's cheap because it doesn't last.
Crews that do, it doesn't work, I hate it.
Right.
I am searching constantly for another way besides that, because that's all, all we have, but, uh, no, I mean, they budgeted that. It's in the budget, I have crews constantly doing that, so.
Okay.
It doesn't, they never finish.
Okay.
And it's only temporary.
Right.
I mean, it's not a good thing, but it's all we got for a temporary patch, do you make anything better than that for a temporary patch?
Not really.
'Cause I ask every engineer and everywhere I go, to every seminar or whatever show I go to, I'm constantly trying to find something better.
The the only thing you could do is try to apply it a little better, you know, you'd have to have, uh.
Well, we getting ready to.
A viber plate on, you know, and.
We have somebody come in to do a demonstration, because I am hoping that I could get that as best as I can. I don't think we are applying it completely as we could, but it's still temporary. But that's not gonna add up to forty thousand dollars if that's where you're heading.
I'll keep tying it in. That is, that's where I was heading.
That's probably where you were heading.
Yep. Wasted money. Okay.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Seven F.
Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection with state project number H point zero-one-one-seven-eight-one. L A six seventy-five and L A eighty-seven, improvements in New Iberia.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed. Uh, Hopkins Street, uh, just to tell you all, uh, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, ma'am, uh, I've been getting calls, since we've been repairing our roads, uh, I've been getting a lot of calls about why, why we haven't repaired, uh, Hopkins Streets. And of course, we have to explain to them that it's a state highway, uh, and right now we are.
It's hung up in a road swap. In other words, before we were in office.
Correct.
It, the last mayor did a road swap and that is part of it. The road swap can't close out until Hopkins Street is done. And so then they have all that drainage to do, they're pulling up all the lights, and it's gonna be a huge project. But basically, that was committed to before we, before I was ever here.
Correct.
Um, but it's finally coming and it's long overdue.
Right. And, and most of my constituents know that, because I do have the history of the road swap. So I'm able to explain that to my constituents who, who, I just had a guy today.
Thank you.
Uh, blaming some state people about why they didn't, because they, they know a little more, you know, about.
Yeah.
It's then, you know, the average person. And so this is authorizing you to try to push them a little harder?
It's coming. It's finally coming. I mean, I've seen the plans. They, again, they're putting these huge drainage boxes all the way to the bayou, which is gonna help in the west end to get some water toward there, instead of all going to Armaco.
Correct.
Now we finally flow some the other way. But to do that, I mean, it's nineteen feet deep when they get to the bayou. You could probably drive a car through those box, they're huge. They have to pull up all of those ornamental lights, which we are bringing to the park to use on the, uh, walking trail. We, uh, they pull up the sidewalks, they pull up the street. I mean, it's gonna be a major project. It's gonna be a mess.
And the trees.
And the little trees that we planted, we're gonna have to dig them up and plant them somewhere else. But, uh, it's a, it's a major project.
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So I, I, I kinda, I'm just saying the history of it. I know the history of it, because my aunt was on the council and, I mean, I remember her fighting for the, for the drainage projects.
She schooled me when I got here on.
Wanted it done right. And then that's why she's fighting, but she wanted it done right, and that's why it's taking so long, because it's gonna get done right. Oh, I even stopped several times. Every time I see a D O T D truck out there, I stop. If I'm passing and finding out, and I've gotten dates, one, one group said they were gonna start in twenty-twenty-two.
They were supposed to. It's kinda like the frontage road they've been waiting on for fifteen years now.
You know, it's just, it, for me, it's just about letting the public know that we are working on it. It's coming. It's, it's not on our end. But, uh, authorizing you to push it, I think is, 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 is good. The public needs to know. The public needs to know now that they don't have to fuss at me. They can fuss at you, because you gotta push it.
That's what we're trying to do, sir.
Well.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So, like Marla, I get questions about it, um, but my questions are more around the fact, because I have part of Hopkins Street as well. And the questions I'm getting is, how's this gonna impact the businesses on Hopkins Street? Because a lot of them, they're worried about whether or not there's gonna be parking available for their customers. So, I mean.
As I saw the plans, and I have nothing to do with planning the project, I can pass it along and we can try. It's the state. Because Loco has to move all the main water lines. Uh, I mean, it's, it's extensive. I'm saying, it's gonna be a very big mess, because the water lines, all their laterals have to come out. The main water line, I gave the approval, because what they wanted to do was bury it to highway specs where the new water line would have been six feet down. So imagine they would have had, I mean, if it been a contractor, they would have had to dig in the middle of the street to put the water line six feet deep, which is ridiculous. That's what you do on the interstate. On all of our streets, the water line is eighteen inches to two foot. So they, I went to a meeting and said, my God, you know, you're gonna rip up that whole area for a very long time. And then Loco's engineer was there and they said, you know, if they would let us do it like all the rest of the streets in town, we would be able to save four feet of digging and, you know, at least time and mess. And so they asked me and I said, I was fine, you know, if they're, if D, D O T would approve it, they're paying for it, it's their project, you know, I would be fine with it. And then the engineers from D O T D said, you know, we do that all the time, but we, we had to ask. Well, if Loco hadn't have brought it up and I hadn't have asked as well, it, it would be six feet deep, which would be four feet of digging more all along the whole road. But it is gonna be a mess. I, I don't know what the state does with that. That's something we're gonna ask and try to find out. Um.
Yeah, I mean, we really need to have an idea of how we're gonna handle the businesses there.
Well, you look at the streets we're doing with our small, compared to that, okay, what we're doing is nothing. It's miniscule. You know, we're taking off this much asphalt, we're blocking the street, we're taking off the asphalt, we're milling it, we're recoating, or we're breaking out panels and doing concrete work. That is nothing compared, the mess that you see with that is nothing compared to what's coming. Uh, it's gonna be wonderful in the end, but to get there is not gonna be, you know.
And we're talking about almost a year-long project, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So.
So I asked that question. It will be a year-long, I mean, it, it is a year-long project.
Okay, if you could just.
They're not gonna tear the entire road up at once.
No.
Where they're working at a time, it's something will always be in disarray on Hopkins Street.
Right. It's just, it would be helpful if we could find out.
Well, let's, uh, let's plan on, we will ask them to, uh, get with us prior. Maybe we can get them to come, the best thing would be if we can come here. Let's see, we could get them to come to a meeting and, uh, invite the engineers for the project and someone from D O T D to come and explain to the public exactly what they're doing. Because our, our phones are gonna be, it's a good project, it's coming, we, we, you know, that deal was inked, like I said, long before us, and it's a needed project.
Right.
But our phones are gonna be the ones that are ringing, so why don't we, uh, make the effort and get them to come to a meeting and, and let us know their plan?
Okay.
We can't, I don't know how much we can control it, but at least, you know, knowledge is something we'll all know.
Right. Sounds good.
Cool. Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm just, and just kinda like, didn't D O T D do Cali Saloon? I mean, if they can have the Cali Saloon.
Oh, yeah, no, they, no, they're gonna be able to do it. We, we.
I'm talking about with all the businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah, they gonna, you know.
Yeah. It was a mess, but they did it, you're right. And that took more than a year.
And they're gonna stay.
It was a big mess.
Hmm?
Yeah.
But I think we can prep ourselves for that mess.
Right. I, that's what I'm saying. I'm, we just need to be, the business, all the business owners need to know that what the plan is, so they can plan to, you know, make some concessions for their customers. And then just the people that actually, you know, go to those businesses.
Yeah, agree.
How to get in and out.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Seven F. Oh, gee, I'm sorry, we're dead.
Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract with Royal Security Solutions Incorporated for the purchase and installation of security equipment at the former Park Elementary School.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Lewis and who is the second? Uh, Councilwoman Dee Ledbetter, thank you. Do we have any discussion on this item? And what this is, just to tell you, we are putting a security system at the school that we purchased. Uh, the one that was there doesn't function and we're trying to get that done before we start any improvements through our ARPA money.
And this, this includes monitoring?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's not the fanciest system in the world, but it, yes, we, we should have everything we need.
Okay.
And, ma'am, fair to say, put in place to protect our investment.
Exactly right, one hundred percent. Uh, you, you, if you remember, that some of our departments would be using some of that for storage. And then we're taking one wing and doing a little senior citizen center and a computer lab, so we certainly need, uh, security.
And we're getting security now or once it, we're getting?
Once you approve this.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, and when, when do the cameras go up?
Oh, this, this will go up now.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I wanna do that before we spend any money out there. This is also, when we went on our little trial ride yesterday, because we kinda picked the location yesterday, I'm already working on that. We pick where the little community garden's gonna go, so I, I want, you know, protection for all those things.
Yeah, no, it may, it may start.
Before we start, you know.
Because they did have, like, I think you mentioned they had some vandalism out there.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have had some.
You know, I just feel like people need to know, so when they wonder why, why, why y'all putting cameras where nobody at? Because we've been having vandalism, we want to protect our.
Yeah. Our investment.
Investment.
Their investment.
Yeah, really, really. The community.
Their investment.
We just represent them. It's their money.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, we made it to the eighth. Eight A.
Special ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-twenty-two-three-dash-fourteen, amendment number thirteen, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect excess forfeiture receipt restricted to be used as narcotics and setting for public hearing on March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Take it.
Motion, Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, and a second by Mayor Proton Ricky Gossele. Do we have any discussion?
So, no, go ahead, Marla.
No, I was just gonna ask, what is it about?
Any money that we receive that Narcotics, uh, receives or equipment that they, uh, wanna purchase, we use money seized from Narcotics. It can only be used for that, uh, and there is some equipment that the P D wants to purchase, and so we bring it as a resolution.
So any money, any money?
If the, if the, our drug teams, narcotic detectives seize money or property, uh, any proceeds from that. You go through the DA's office, it's quite a process. Any of that money can only be spent on narcotic items.
On narcotic investigation items?
Yes, yeah, yeah, not narcotics themselves, but. Yeah, that, that would be, that would be interesting. No, but it could be spent on, you know, if it's, if it's some kind of, uh, tool for detectives, uh, something that they can utilize in that department. Which is how it's always been, but we don't do these that often, but every once in a while, we're able to do that.
So if there's, let's say there's a major drug bust, half a million dollars, but they don't need but a hundred thousand, we can't give the other four hundred to the rest of the police department?
Uh, no, it has to stay for Narcotics, and it's only by law, because we had looked into that, we were building the department, can only be used for Narcotics, forfeitures can only be used for Narcotics.
So we, could it be used to hire another detective?
Yeah, you can get creative in that department.
Yeah.
Right.
Then you shift money to the other department. I mean, you know, it's all a budget. It's all within a budget, so.
Right, I'm just.
I'm not saying that it doesn't help the total department, because it does.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we've never seen anything like that. I mean, you know, we've bought some, you know, small items. We, we've never seen that kinda money.
Yeah, I mean, never know.
That's what's gonna be my question. You brought up another question. Do you know what is, what was the largest bus in New Iberia?
I do not.
Okay.
I can ask for the four and a half years that we've been back and I can find that out for you, but I do not know. I'll put that down. It'll be interesting to know.
Half a million dollar probably gonna bring the DA deep.
Oh, yeah, they would be, yeah, we would, the feds would be here, I can tell you. And, and they would take the money.
Exactly.
Anyway, anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Eight B.
Special ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-twenty-two-three-dash-fifteen, amendment number fourteen, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect security expenditures for acquired Park Elementary property and setting for public hearing on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman, uh, Dee Johnson Reed, and I think Councilwoman Dee Ledbetter is the second. Good. Any discussion? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you very much. Eight C.
Ordnance number twenty-two-three-dash-oh-nine, and ordinance amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia and setting for public hearing on March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, and I think the second might have been this time, Councilman David Broussard. Eight C, uh, discussion on this item.
So are we receiving more funds?
No, this is, every time we change something, we amended, uh, Laney does. This is the million dollars that we are using to clean canals.
Mm-hmm.
We had it, but it might have been a match if the state had put up some money as they did for sewer, but, but they're not.
Okay.
So we are moving it so that we can proceed with cleaning all our canals. So all it's doing is going from one section to, you know, just amending it to reflect exactly what we're doing. We have two hundred thousand in our budget, so now that will give us a total of one point two million. Uh, Joe and his staff have been actively, and, and Jeff has been involved in helping, have been actively obtaining right of ways that we didn't have, or just securing up where we had it existing right of way so that we could begin, because that project will bid out. Chandler's putting, our engineer is putting that together. It's still a few months away, but we need to keep the ARPA stuff up, so that every time we report, I mean, that's the federal government, that we have it exactly like what we're doing. But the plan is to bid that project out in probably three months and begin, and that will help us clean. I mean, we're cleaning, Joe's been here for almost thirty years and talking to people who have been here that long. No one, there's some of the canals that Public Works says we've never cleaned. So I think that that will greatly help our drainage and we all talk amongst ourselves often about the, where we have issues. So what we're trying to do is in one full sweep, bid out, get, we have a backup plan. There are some canals that Public Works could handle. So we're doing them as an alternate. We hope we can get one contractor to go and do it all. If we can't, that we don't have enough money to do that, well, then we'll back up and Public Works will do some of the ones that they are capable or that our equipment is, you know, the right size to handle. But, uh, it's gonna be a big undertaking, because like I said, many of these have never been, no, I can't say never, but haven't been done in a very long time.
Right.
So this is just the housekeeping that, uh, Laney is great at, of keeping our ARPA report exactly what we're doing.
So is that reflected in this report? Cause I didn't see any changes in here. Where is it reflected?
Get him, Laney.
I was looking for it.
Get him, Laney.
No, I'm not saying, she didn't. Oh, I see it now.
I'm picking on Laney.
Okay, I missed it. Thank you. No, I was just trying to figure out. I was like, okay, this looks the same.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Laney.
It's that only one item, that's why I talked about it.
Yeah. Hey, just checking.
Thank you for looking.
I look.
Is there zero tolerance in the ARPA report?
Yes, there is. I'm telling you. I want all of y'all to look, because it's.
So within the next three months, we should see movement, maybe around the Dastet Cooley?
Uh, uh, again, we're not gonna be able to tell the contract, if we get one contractor, just remember that. I think that the project will bid in about three months, is what we're hoping. And then when it bids, we're gonna have one contractor and it's gonna be just like your roads. You cannot dictate means and methods or where they start, so.
Shouldn't we prioritize that people's privacy fences are about to fall in?
We have, we have that all over, though. I mean, we have issues, you know. Again, the fair thing is, the contractor bids the job, and if you start telling a contractor where he's gonna go and on what schedule, the price is gonna go up.
Not tell, maybe suggest.
Well, we can suggest, but I can't promise.
I would say we suggest and street.
Yeah, we're gonna have a whole bunch of suggestions.
That's when your phones are gonna start ringing, because when they start digging and the fence is in the right of way, and the fence goes away and you can't put it back up.
Yeah, because if their fence is in the right of way, they gotta, they have to put it back. We don't put it back. And some of those fences that are falling over that, you know, they're in the right of way. So it, it, it's not a easy fix, you know, but we gotta follow the rules.
Okay.
So, but yes, I'm hoping in about three months, we bid the project, Chandler's working on the drawings, and then again, though, you can't really tell them where to start and stop.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? And, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. But I'll suggest.
Nicely.
Okay, nicely. Uh, let's see, no.
Eight D.
Eight D.
Amendment to ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-oh-three, an ordinance declaring certain New Iberia Police Department vehicles a surplus, a surplus, and further authorizing the sale of same to Honneville Police Department or any other agency at a cost not less than seventeen thousand dollars in accordance with state law and setting for public hearing on April fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion? And the price is right on this one.
This is, yeah, what we talked about earlier.
Yes. Scene, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Item nine A.
Discuss their response from DOTD regarding the proposed closure of the Deer Street Railroad crossing.
Thank you, you have the letter, we, at the council's request, I wrote a letter, and they gave us a response. It's not exactly what we would have wanted, but that's what we're here to discuss. I'm looking for it. Should be my last page.
It's not spelled Laney's nice name. And it's up there.
Read the response. The Providence Street Crossing is still to be closed. This was not objected to, per my understanding, at the reconsideration board's hearing. So, from my understanding, Providence Street is to be closed per state law. The cost to install gates at the Caroline Street Crossing was a rough cost given to me by BNSF. The cost of the special installation for the gates at Deer, it is BNFS policy not to just relocate these gates. 'Cause if you remember, I wrote him a letter and said, you already had relocation in the job once, so just use it there, why are you charging me more? And why can't we take the arms and lights, if that's what the council chose to do? Take them, take them, just relocate them, because they're already paid for, and they were already there. We had numbers that floated out early on, at least when Mr. Broussard was getting the other arms and lights and crossings of like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as you know, they came back with between four and five hundred thousand dollars, plus fifty thousand dollars to relocate, to close the other crossing. So, that brought us to a total of maybe fi, between four hundred and fifty and five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's when you asked me to write the letter, I wrote the letter, and this is our response that we got back. So, that, that kind of brings us where we are, and I'll open up the floor for our discussion. Yes, sir.
I'd like to read my statement, I wasn't here at the last meeting. The railroad company in the State of Louisiana reacted to New Iberia for making our street crossings safer. So, they started, they gave us five, four or five, we have up already. We're looking at doing three or four more. Progress is being made. Deer Street has safety equipment installed, and that part overall railroad crossing in New Iberia is complete. Lately, a request for removing safety equipment at Deer Street and relocating the safety equipment to Caroline Street was recommended by, to the mayor. The request was forwarded to the government. The State of Louisiana did not object to this request. Their response was you, the city of New Iberia, not the state, not the federal government. The city has to pay four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move that crossing from Deer, if not five hundred, and move it to Caroline. So, that's the answer they gave us. I believe this would upset the progress providing, improving safety of our railroad crossings. Deer Street is history. Let's leave it alone. Let's all fight to get Caroline Street there arm and light. You know, it'd be a little cheaper in my mind. Why move, that's just spending money if we need for Caroline. But get them to come down and do what they have to do. The state government railroad company is presently at work in progress to address our concerns to make the city railroad crossings safer. I agree that all of us must have our say. Now let the railroad company do their work. We've been waiting long enough, come on down, do your work. I move that the council concentrate its efforts to push for safety equipment at railroad crossings in New Iberia on Iberia Weeks, Julia, French Streets. Those streets are in railroad crossings in the center of New Iberia. I estimate that over thirty-five thousand citizens of New Iberia and Iberia Parish, among others, are crossing these tracks. It is with feelings of pride, the city council contribute, contributing ideas for making our railroad crossings safer for our citizens and others. We've been working this a long time, we've been three meetings, I think, on this Deer Street. You know, I think, I hope, I hope we're clearing up that Deer will stay like it is. Let's concentrate our effort on maybe trying to get arms and lights at Caroline. So, if we can close out the, this thing about Deer Street every meeting coming up, we tell them the state, leave it alone. Concentrate on maybe getting up arm and light at Caroline. So, we can't just keep bringing this up and up and up. The state's waiting to hear what we gotta say about Deer Street, and I hope we, it's over now, you know. It's been up there three meetings on Deer Street, so I feel that it's up already. Leave it alone. You gotta go three quarters of a mile down Font Lou to get to the Little Street to turn. I turned on my bus for fifteen years. It's hard to turn off of Font Lou to that Little Street, then turn on Deer to come up to the railroad track. See, they weren't gonna put a road along the railroad track from Deer to Font Lou before they put the arms and lights, 'cause they weren't, they were gonna close Deer. But they couldn't, they didn't put a road. So, now they figured out they had to go three quarters of a mile down Font Lou, then turn on that little narrow street, and then turn right on Deer to come back to railroad track to a fire. It was too dangerous. So, that's why they put the arms and lights at Deer, so that they can just go straight down with the fire truck or ambulance or whatever they have to do. They don't have to come back and make that loop. So, that's their reasoning for putting arms and lights at Deer. Safety. So, it's been coming up every meeting, Mr. Mayor, anything we can do to at least close out Deer Street? We can keep talking about Caroline? Yes, we closed up Providence, that's all off the board, you know, it looks like. So, let's concentrate on our talk on Caroline to see if we can get arms and lights. It'd be cheaper, anyway, just put a set of arms and lights and move them around. Five hundred thousand dollars, take two hundred and fifty thousand and put a new setup if we had to pay. But I don't think the city wants to pay, I think. But that's my idea on this, and I wasn't here last meeting, so if we can, I'm just here to try to close out the Deer Street talk. It's been three meetings, two, three meetings on this. It's coming up to what it costs to do. So, let's concentrate on Caroline and see what we can do to get that going. That's my idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um...
Councilwoman Ledbetter.
It was discussed, and yes, you weren't here, but it was discussed that since there are existing arms there, it seemed that it would be cheaper to just move them rather than put some new ones. That was the discussion at the time. Now evidently, the railroad has...
It's against their policy.
Exactly. It's against their policy. So, the new ones would cost between four and five hundred thousand dollars. That was what we got on the last letter. Okay? So, um... Way back when this all started, before my tenure, Deer Street was one street that was looked at. It was offered by that particular councilman. However, they felt at the time that Deer Street was better not to close Deer and close Caroline because of the traffic flow. But of course, since then, we have the rehab center there, the, um, the extra building of, of the nursing facility there. And that is why now, of course, that, um, that's the change. The, the people who live there, the neighborhood right there, pretty much has changed. The traffic has changed there, and they haven't really done another study to even look at that. So, when we put up the fight to save Caroline, they said, okay, fine, but we have to close one. Deer Street was offered again. They said, okay, we'll close Deer Street, we'll leave Caroline Street. So, that's a done deal. The problem is the four to five hundred thousand dollars to put arms at Caroline. That's the only thing that we are pretty much discussing right now. Not whether it's gonna close or not, Deer Street is gonna close.
Let's stay open up.
So, that's where we are.
Well, if you go with the original plan...
Deer's open Caroline.
Right, right. If we tell, I mean, our two choices, as I see it, are if we come up with no money at all and tell them we, we can't afford to do anything, they can go back to their original point.
Right.
You know, so, anyone costs any money, but that's what they're gonna do. Or we come up with a way to, to, to do something different. It's like we're penalized because we asked to change that, that plan, is, is what they do.
Pretty much. But Caroline hasn't had arms for all these years. They didn't think anything about it. The other three crossings that they promising to put arms, haven't had arms for all of this time. And yes, it is a safety issue, but that's ridiculous to pay that much to the railroad. You know, to put something that...
I don't disagree with that.
To put something that they should be doing, because it's their property, it's not our property. You know, and it is to protect our citizens, but why should we have to pay for something that they need to do? That's just, that's just wrong. And we might need to fight that fight, too. But, but I did talk to, um, he's no longer the, the secretary for Transportation.
Mr. Wilson.
I did, yes, he, he retired, but he did say that's the going cost, but he wouldn't ask the, the city to pay that full amount. That's the way they were looking at it. If the city could come up with something, not just nothing. That was what he told me, but of course, now he's not there anymore, so... But that, but I did get the card of the guy that you always call Ivy or...
Ivy.
Ivy?
That was Broussard.
Yeah. So, as soon as, um, we can contact, he said, you know, feel free to contact him, and we can do that, and hopefully, you know, say how much we can afford and move from there. Or leave it the way it is. I don't have a problem, and I don't think anybody on the street has a problem with leaving it the way it is.
You mean with no arms?
Yeah.
With no arms, but obviously, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Well, the railroad has a problem. DOTD has a problem with that. I don't know if they're gonna allow us to leave it just...
Well, if left all the other three that they're supposed to put arms at undone.
That doesn't make it right, but you, you, you're right about that, but it doesn't make it right that they, you know, they, I don't know that they're gonna wanna leave, the whole point of the project, I thought, was to improve their public safety.
I think the original deal was...
I don't know if they're gonna wanna just say, see you later.
Right. I think the original deal was if they installed lights at other crossing, that we had to close those two of those, right? Providence?
They came in and said we had to close two crosses.
'Cause for them, and then, that's where we are, okay.
Years ago. And then it was Providence for a while, and then now they say Providence is off the table.
The way it sounds to me is that...
Providence is gonna be closed.
Right, that's what I mean, it'll be closed, it's not...
I think it sounds to me that we either come up with four and fifty thousand dollars or they're gonna close Caroline. That's the way it sounds to me.
Right.
I don't agree with it, but...
I don't either.
No, it doesn't sound like that to me. It, it, it really doesn't.
They'll come down and see what state they're gonna do.
Well, um, as far as I know, Deer Street was the one that they said they were gonna do. That was the last thing.
They were gonna do what to Deer Street?
Close the Deer Street Crossing.
And leave Caroline open?
And leave Caroline open. That's what came down, we got a letter saying that and everything.
That's right. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So...
Okay. So, the only, the only outstanding question is, was it not we put arms?
He spoke once, I'm gonna go around.
Exactly.
Fair way to do it. Anybody who hadn't spoken? Uh, yes, ma'am.
So, don't we allow the railroad company to use city property to pass through? Can we ever stop them?
They have a right of way that's been there forever, and that's a done deal.
It's the design of the railroad.
I mean, since it's such an inconvenience...
We've been here since seventeen seventy-nine, it pisses me off when they say they were here first, but, but on the flip side, they've been here a long time, and that, that, that ship is sailed. They have a right of way right through the middle of our town.
There's nothing we can do about it.
Can't tell them who it...
Okay, 'cause that was gonna be my suggestion.
I would love for it not to be in the middle of our town.
Right, 'cause it's very inconvenient whenever the train just kinda breaks down in the middle of town.
We had one train derailment already that had toxic chemicals in it. Look around the country, we've been having those. I would love for that, and I always wonder as I'm waiting for the train, what's in those cars? But that, we, we don't have any recourse on that. Not because they were here first, just because we, they have been here a long time, but they, they have a right of way.
Okay.
Towns would build asking a railroad to come, you know, we weren't, but...
Okay, that was gonna be my suggestion, my bright idea.
And that would be, if we could do that, that would be great, I would, we, we would have stopped them a long time ago.
So, do we, we still have to find another crossing to close? Is that still an issue, or no?
Not really.
Yep, they want two.
That's not the issue.
Well, they say they want, it depends on, you know, they want two crossings to close for them to come and arm the others.
Okay.
And so, the problem we're at is, we tried to change their plan, and they just, for whatever reason, right or wrong, 'cause I, I don't really agree with it, but we tried to change their plan and say, why don't you take these arms and lights and move them over here, practical solution, we done. You already had money in to close one, spend that money over there, swap those arms around, you know, everybody's happy. Well, that, that, they're resisting that and, and saying, we're, you know, we're gonna do what we're gonna do. I don't know if they're ever gonna just come and do it, because it is their property, and, and I guess they could, I don't know. Jeff, if they wanted to, did they need us to approve it? Will we just be in limbo?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
They closed Leon Prairie, I think just came closing them up.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I don't know if, if they can just do that or what, but that's the impasse we're at.
Okay.
Yes, sir, you had your hand up?
So, the, the arms and lights on Deer Street, if they close Deer Street, I guess they're gonna use the arms and lights to be the barrier, right?
No, they would pull them up...
They pull them up.
And say, we're not reusing them, 'cause that's their railroad policy, because they wouldn't have common sense and put them at the other one.
Right.
So, they're gonna pull them up and take them, 'cause they're their property, and they're just gonna put, like, you see the other ones that are closed, they just have a barrier. They pull up the road, and they just have...
Like Ann Street.
Like Ann Street, it would look like Ann Street.
No, Lee Street.
No, it's Lee Street.
Lee, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say Lee Street, yeah, not Ann.
Yeah. So, they pull up the road so you can't approach it, and it just has a barricade.
And it is horrible.
Yeah, it's not so pretty.
The biggest concern for, yeah, for, for, for y'all in District Four, Caroline and our constituency is that they opened Caroline, and the next concern is, do we get arms and, and, and lights at Caroline? So, I say we, we settle, let them take their lights, and then fight to bring them back. Fight to bring their arms and lights back, you know, put the ball back in their court, 'cause safety, safety falls, safety from the railroad falls back on them.
It should.
It falls back on them. You close them, you, you take your arms and lights, and safety falls back on them to put up arms and lights at, at Caroline. Now, who pays for them? I mean, I hope the new guy, you know...
Well, that's not his call either, it's the railroad.
Okay.
See?
Well, that was only his suggestion.
The railroad supersedes his decision.
Yeah.
He can help, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know Sean Wilson could. Okay, everybody spoke once, Mr. Broussard, back to you.
Ricky, a new man is for the railroad, not Mr. Schueterberg.
That's right.
He's gonna stay there.
Stay there.
Mr. Verret.
Verret, I'm taking Wilson, please.
That's the one that go do the major work. But, uh, from the beginning, Mr. Mayor, when this council, that the whole delegation came down, Mr. Mills and our whole delegation stood right there and gave us three million dollars more from the state? Remember, they came down and gave me the two hundred thousand dollars back?
Many years ago.
They had two hundred thousand dollars back of the federal money? So, I had a million and a half dollars of federal money that got all these arms put up that we talking about.
Oh, yes, sir.
Bank Street, Corrine, Deer, you know, they all evangelizing, very serious. How you can say you don't need a crossing when that train's coming thirty miles an hour from General Ett? Right on through. I watched it every day of my life, every day I watch at my office. At Scottish Campus Hills, woof, woof. Lucky there hadn't been no accident, so it's dangerous right there.
It's dangerous everywhere you don't have a crossing.
A million, a million and a half of federal money, put those arms and lights up. Now, the delegation came down and stuff, five of them, Baraz, Mills, the whole delegation. I don't know if y'all were here, or it was other, it was the other council.
Yeah, no, that's when I was the pro team, and you were sitting in the seat.
Sat right there and gave us three million more...
They did.
To finish the rest of them down the middle of New Iberia. That's far, almost five million dollars we got for the safety of Iberia Parish, not another parish. I brought that because I knew the state had to pay for all these arms and lights. I didn't realize they were gonna come up and stop a few of these crossings, you know? But I still understand that we have this three million dollars left, the million of, three million of state money to finish all the ones down the middle of town. So, let's use up, let's not get rid of, let's not lose that three million dollars. It's dedicated for Iberia Parish, uh, New Iberia. I, I moved it from the overpass to the arms and lights, not to lose it off the overpass, that was too expensive. So, I did the second best thing. I put arms and lights up with the federal money. Hard, you never hear that, anywhere in the nation, you don't hear.
For some Armaco Canal.
Still Armaco Canal, yeah. I'm not tooting my horn, but I'm letting you know where the money come from, but we have three million dollars sitting right now from state money. To finish all the rest of them that we have. We just have this one obstacle to see what we gotta do with Caroline. So in a big way, I want the people to know, I brought, we brought, not just say me, the delegation, everybody brought. We have about five million dollars we brought for this project to get done. You know, three million sitting up there right now, ready to go down the middle of town. For Yarberia Weeks, Julia and French Streets. So that's my saying on this, and it's all for safety. Bank Street, how many wrecks we had? A lot. First ones that went put up was Bank Street Arms. Evans was plain old dangerous right next to Caroline. I drove the school bus. Dangerous to go across without looking for that twenty-five, thirty mile an hour Amtrak train coming from Generec. He didn't slow down too much, no. He's coming and there were, they had no arms and lights coming from Generec all the way to Lewis Street. Except Font Lou maybe had one. But in a big way, that's my saying on this. We have the money to do it, it's being held up, but the the project is moving forward, whether we like it or not. It's moving forward, so it's be, it's still yet to come down the middle of town. And let's get them up.
Thank you. Anybody else have any further discussion? End our discussion. Uh we'll move on to item ten, councilman's remarks. Uh councilwoman Markata, start on your side and work it around.
Okay, I just uh wanted to reflect on the trolley ride. Um I thought it was interesting, very different way that you presented uh for us to share our districts with everyone. And uh our problems and you guys got to not really see my sewer issues because it wasn't happening at the moment, but um.
It's a good thing.
Strolled up on Tampico and I described everything to you, all the the gory stuff and. You got to see the the Dasbit Cooley and how the fence, whether it be in the right position or not, I don't know, but it's fallen into that ditch. You know, those little things, I think it's important, you know, I appreciate everything that you guys said too about your districts. It was very uh eye opening, to say the least. And that's it, I thought it was a good thing.
Sir.
Thank you, Brooke, for uh bringing that up. It was, it was great. The trolley ride was great, um getting a chance to see mostly our successes um. And and again, I I I I heard our our attorney talk about our passion for our districts, uh and that was noticed by me as well. Uh but it was a good team building skill as well. It was great team building, uh. You know, for us to see what uh what we face every day in our, in our districts, uh. You know, I said I was gonna not uh make a comment tonight and then something kept telling me, I listen to my conscience, not all of it, most of it. And and it, you know, I said I was gonna say no comment, but then with with all of the things happening in our community concerning gun violence. It's like another comment about gun violence, yeah, another comment about gun violence, you know? Uh I've been doing some surveying in my, in my barber shop, cause I get a lot of young kids in my barber shop and I've been asking them, what do they think about what's happening? And most of them, you know, are disheartened, you know, I even been asking them, do you carry a gun? Do you carry a gun? And I'm getting some, some answers and uh different answers from different kids, but we got some really good kids out there. Uh and we got some really bad kids, but I asked the kids, what do they think the problem is? I asked these to kids. You know what most of them tell me? Parenting. We had structure. We had, I had a daddy. Uh well, my mom wasn't there, but my grandmother and grandparents was there. It's about the parenting. You know, and I tell people right now that anything that uh I can do, I'll support any initiative that deals directly with parenting and children relationship. And I'm just saying, I'm not saying I won't help with anything else. I mean, the preaching is good, the church, the prayer walks are good, the marches are good. But I've seen a ton of them and I haven't seen any differences. So we need to try to find another approach to reach these youth. And I know for a fact that we have some model kids out here and we need to try to start using some of these kids to get to these other kids. You know, they don't wanna listen to me anymore. You know, thank God I have a captive audience and they still respect me as a barber, but they don't wanna listen to us old people anymore.
You gotta finish the haircut.
That's right, that's right. But uh. Let's not, let's not let let the parents off the hook and. And and let's try to find some ways to support those parents that really wanna help those kids, that really wanna make their kids become better. Let's try, cause I'm I'm not throwing, I I I wouldn't stand here and throw money at a problem that is a uh national problem. A national crisis. You know, I would see us, like to see us throw money at intervention and prevention, dealing with parenting and dealing with those kids that um. That's that's lost and they want, they want help. And always remember, they got an old African proverb, I I would like to say that every, every holy book. That I've ever read says, if you spit a rod, you spoil the child. Every holy book. The Torah, the Quran, the Bible, all them say the same thing about disciplining your children. You know, and that's what we need to get back to. It's not about abuse, but it's about discipline. You know, I'm gonna use this platform, I got two years left on this council, I'm gonna use this platform to get this. Cause I don't have to go to a town hall and say this, but I do thank God for this platform that I have. I'm gonna bring that out very regularly about parenting. Parents need to get back to parenting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was very impressed uh riding our trolley. Of the neighborhoods, seeing uh even if they, even if it's a empty lot, that old house is gone. Blighted properties are gone. Yeah, it's it's sickening to see that we don't have a person living in them houses, but it sure is nice for the neighbors next door. Look around. Everybody in that district, I know some districts are worse, you know, you have a lot more blighted properties than some other districts. But people, look around, you're a lot better off than you were fifteen years ago. A lot better off. Yarberia Street. Look at it, Walton Street, look at it, look at the street. Can race down that thing now, before it was bupity bump. But Mr. Mayor, I wanna appreciate everything you've done. You've al, you okayed a lot of this to get done. And I'm proud of watching it through the last twelve, fifteen years, but the last seven, eight years, we have cleaned up this city a lot. And the the streets. Now the people is your streets, it's your properties. Y'all have control of helping us, where to get some money. To do some more. It doesn't come free. So Mr. Mayor, I hope you're working on the next project we can a little bit. Maybe it's not a new tax. You know, renew a tax that we have, but leave it like we were trying to do. But not a new tax, but something we can put more money in our streets. Cause we don't wanna be, I keep talking about these little towns and I got, I got one town mad, cause I mentioned their name, but it got a lot of little towns, go look at some towards it. Fourteen way down there. They got some bad streets on some of them little towns, you know, they don't have the money to do it. Well, we don't wanna get stuck. But they got big potholes, two foot by two foot, you know, and also in the, in our, in those streets, it's embarrassing. So Mr. Mayor, I know we can fix our streets now, but we got a bunch left that need to be fixed. And I hope we find a way that uh the people can come forward and help us fix those streets. And uh look around, people, see if you live better off than you did fifteen years ago. I think we are.
Thank you.
Just um echo Marlo's thoughts. I think you hit the nail on the head, Marlo. I just think it's a, it's a vicious circle, you know, they get in trouble at school. Send them home to their parents, parents, put them on the street, police gotta pick them up. We gotta stop it, you know? And and and, you know, we have to, we have to use the other kids to try to to uh intervene and try to make them successful in any way we can and uh. And I'm on on board with anything, cause I think the kids are the foundation of the city. Why I'm saying that, what, how about a big old shout out for Nish and Catholic and the basketball teams? Great job, great kids. You know, that's, that's important to the community, you know, they both did really, really well and. Proud of those guys and those kids. Not only those kids, but all the kids that try to work hard and accomplish those kind of goals. Cause those kids are gonna be model citizens when they achieve goals like that, I think. So and other than that, I I unfortunately, I did have an employee issue at work and I couldn't make the trolley ride and uh I did hear some good things, but. I will make every effort to catch up on that, I assure you. Also, I did get a chance to see our new air handlers that's going to City Park finally. Uh they were delivered this, they were delivered this week. I like to kinda reminisce on things that we vote on and approve on and. You've heard a lot of complaints about the air conditioning center from basketball to events.
A year ago.
I think, a year ago.
A year ago.
I think the chillers are gonna be going in here shortly, so our air conditioning will be fixed, so. Kudos to this council and the mayor for getting that done and we'll have a facility with, in time for some cool air for the summer, but uh that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to remind everyone that we gonna have Neighborhood Watch on March the sixteenth, six o'clock at the Slime. Uh come on out and be a part of it. And uh as far as for piggybacking on on what Councilman Lewis said about parenting. Um before I left Yarberia Parish, I supervised a program that dealt with parenting and adult education. And the two really go hand in hand and we were really making some differences in the lives of those kids. Because the parent in order to get into the adult education program, had to have a a kid um younger than seven. And we would go into the homes and show them the different um ways that they could help their kids parenting and. And they had a parent class as part of their adult education. It was really, really good. We would take them on field trips. And give them experiences that they wouldn't have had any other way. They even had a summer program. They were kept off the streets. But it got canceled. The program got canceled. But it was a very, very good program. And I really truly enjoyed working uh with that program and with the parents. Today I see some of them and they remember me and everything and some of the children too. And um it's always been good to, you you do have to work with the parents and you have to get the kids when they're young. Cause after twelve, it's not much change that will occur. So below, you know, younger than twelve is where we really need to concentrate our efforts on. And working with the parents to get them better educated sometimes. And show them that, you know, it's some things that they can achieve, uh they can go to college. You know, they can go to some kind of post-secondary education. And therefore they can instill that in the kids that's coming up. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Um so I wanted to say um thank you to the Downtown Neighborhood Association. They gave out four hundred LED light bulbs. On Sunday uh to all the residents on Anne Street and all the side streets and on Cherokee Street. Uh it was an effort to help light up the community, cause there's some areas uh on these streets that are very dark. And so they gave them a seventy-five watt LED bulb to put on the porch to light up and keep that porch light on. And then one for inside of the house so that if they, you know, could help with their electricity bill. And they have a few left, so they're gonna um give out some more. Uh and that was from a grant that the Downtown Neighborhood Association received from Cleco. I know that's funny, but okay. Um I also wanted to. I also wanted to um remind everybody that we're having the uh Community Baby Shower on March twenty-fifth, starting at ten o'clock at the Slime Theater. And then we have our home buyer class on April twenty-ninth, starting at nine o'clock in the morning. Uh we hope that we have a lot of people out there so they can get that certificate showing that they uh have attended the class. And then um we are trying to find a date for the Saint Matthews Cemetery Cleanup. Um it's time. Uh we went by there yesterday and we can already see the, yeah, the grass is growing. And it is getting out of control, so we're gonna try and get a date scheduled soon so that we can get out there and clean that up before. And poison that grass before we go, before it gets out of hand like it did last year. And then the last thing is um I agree with everybody else, the trolley ride was, it was good. It gave us an opportunity to show people what's good in our community and what's maybe things that we're working on. Um and I hope I explained to people why I'm so passionate about housing, cause I tried to show them what was going on in my community. Um but one thing that I noticed that I hope that all the citizens will pay attention to is the fact that. The one thing I saw consistently through most of the districts is a lot of trash. There's a lot of trash on, in empty lots, on the side of the streets. I mean, it's ridiculous because every single one of us has the ability to pay, take trash and put it in a trash can. And so I'm asking the citizens, let's please try to keep New Yarberia beautiful. Because in order for us to make this community better, one of the things that we have to do is clean it up. I mean, that's one of the first things, fundamental things, is to have the area clean, so. Let's all try to take our time. If you got trash and and you know what, I live at the corner lot, so I know I experience this all the time. But you don't, if you're in a car, you don't have to throw your trash out the window. Wait till you get to your destination and put it in a trash can. Again, let's keep New Yarberia beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. Festival of Live Oaks is coming up, March eighteenth. Um this year, we're gonna go ahead and honor uh Mr. Pat Thibodeau, so we'll be remembering Pat Thibodeau uh for this year. And also thanks you to the mayor for, I I made a request to name the Showmanship Award uh in Pat's name and he agreed. Um and so the family is very thankful. I spoke to Ms. Sharon this morning, she's very thankful of that and she's actually gonna be honored. She's gonna come from Kentucky. On a Thursday, when she's supposed to come back on a Saturday, just to be there.
That's awesome.
So um March eighteenth, from nine to three, we have everything, including craft booths, vendor booths, uh petting zoo, I believe. Uh fun jumps, a lot of things for the kids. Um I wanna encourage everyone, even all of you, the community, to come out and see what it's all about. We do have the cook-off portion, uh they also have a junior division cook-off. I'm not exactly how many, sure how many teams are in there as far as the kids go, but Jane Trons be heading up that uh with a lot of the four H's. Um Lloyd, do you know how many teams we have right now in the adult uh division, offhand?
We have quite a few interested.
Okay.
But only a select few have registered as of yet.
Okay, so I wanna encourage them, even the ones that are interested, call, call the parks, get signed up. I mean, it's a great event. It's one day, it's not a whole weekend affair, so. But it's also a very nice event. It goes to our parks and recreation. So again, that's all I have for tonight and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for the idea about Pat. I think that's gonna be, you know, something really needed. You know, he he did a lot for us for a very long time.
Oh yeah.
Concerning the trolley ride, yeah, my idea to do that was just based, as you said, in team building. And to show each of us as a team that we have many of the same problems, but that each district does have some unique problems. And that uh, you know, the only way we're gonna move forward, we have two years left together. And so this is just an opportunity to, you know, when a council member becomes passionate about whatever that issue is, well, now you're certain, for the most part. Now you know what they're trying to do. We make budget decisions that affect our whole community and we all have asked, you know, uh Ricky and I. Represent the whole city. Each of you, in in a way, you know, you lobby for your districts, you fight for your districts, for the people you represent. But I think that it uh just goes a lot further when everyone sees firsthand exactly what you're talking about. So I think all of you did, I was very proud. I think all of you did a great job of describing your district. Uh your passion showed through, but you know, it's nice to work with people that understand who they represent. And understand the issues in those areas that they represent. When you rolled up, I mean, you you took the control, you didn't drive it, but. You told the driver where to go, you brought us to the problems you wanted to see, you brought us to the solutions, you brought us to the things at work. We celebrated the things that we've done together so far and, you know, I left with knowing just how much work we have left ahead of us. You look at it with a clean pair of eyes and, you know, from the litter, from the empty lots, from the successes of cleaning up blighted property, but then now what do you do with the lot? You know, who do you represent? Nobody wants to represent an empty lot. We want more citizens. To the successes we've had, to the successes we've had, but what are we gonna do with them? How are we gonna market them and make sure that they succeed? Yes, we are, you know, spending a lot of money in our parks. Everyone went to their park and showed the new projects or the need for them or the projects that are coming or on the horizon. And then it just kinda helps us, I think, work as a team to market those assets that we're gonna have. We're investing the people's money and we're putting it in the areas that we know it can be utilized. But I think this, that when you go and look at it all as a team, it's gonna help us to figure out that we get the best utilization out of that. When we talk about, you know, that we are kicking off an anti-violence program or the start of one very soon, in the next few weeks, as as many of you are part of that. Um I do think, you know, when I looked at Obama's program, A Leader In Me, and tried to get that in the schools years ago, cause it started with little bitty kids. And and you exactly right, which I know you know that as an educator, by the time they're twelve years old, it's it's really too late. And so that program starts in pre-K and works up and and it and it works. I don't know why every school doesn't have that. I mean, it it's a really good program. But we are gonna have some money left. We are kicking off the beginning, which is just see something, say something. That's not the slogan, but that's the whole point. We are trying to get people to work as a community and stop some of these violent incidents before they happen, because we do see after the fact, unfortunately. You know, that for two and three weeks before, there's count, ring doorbell footage of of kids with guns, of things going on that shouldn't. So the beginning of the program is just to try to raise awareness and hopefully somebody will pick up the phone so that we can get those guns off the street. But I realize that's just, that's just a small part of it. So if you have any ideas, because we are gonna have some money left. You have any ideas of how we could reach those parents, how we could assist, bring them forward. I mean, it's not too late. We'll launch this first part, but it's only the first part. In the summer, we are gonna try to reach kids and do some programs that actually reach out to kids. But after that, it's where do we go from there? Because we are spending it in small little chunks. So if you have some ideas and and have some experiences, which I know many of you do, of how we could incorporate some education to the parents, how we could. Reach those families, man, bring it on. We are gonna have the ability, no, we can't fix all the problems and and that's not the role of government. But on the flip side, this is our community. So it's a role of us as the citizens in this community, because, you know, you never forget, that's what we are. We might represent five thousand people each and and. Concerning the trolley ride, yeah, my idea to do that was just based, as you said, in team building and to show each of us as a team that we have many of the same problems, but that each district does have some unique problems and that, uh, you know, the only way we're gonna move forward, we have two years left together, and so this is just an opportunity to, you know, when a council member becomes passionate about whatever that issue is, well, now you're certain for the most part. Now you know what they're trying to do. We make budget decisions that affect our whole community and we all have asked, you know, uh, Ricky and I, uh, represent the whole city, each of you, in, in a way, you know, you lobby for your districts, you fight for your districts, for the people you represent, but I think that it, uh, just goes a lot further when everyone sees firsthand exactly what you're talking about. So I think all of you did, I was very proud. I think all of you did a great job of describing your district. Uh, your passion showed through, but, you know, it's nice to work with people that understand who they represent and understand the issues in those areas that they represent. When you rolled up, I mean, you, you took the control, you didn't drive it, but you told the driver where to go, you brought us to the problems you wanted to see, you brought us to the solutions, you brought us to the things at work. We celebrated the things that we've done together so far and, you know, I left with knowing just how much work we have left ahead of us. You look at it with a clean pair of eyes and, you know, from the litter, from the empty lots, from the successes of cleaning up blighted property, but then now what do you do with the lot? You know, who do you represent? Nobody wants to represent an empty lot. We want more citizens. To the successes we've had, to the successes we've had, but what are we gonna do with them? How are we gonna market them and make sure that they succeed? Yes, we are, you know, spending a lot of money in our parks. Everyone went to their park and showed the new projects or the need for them or the projects that are coming or on the horizon. And then it just kinda helps us, I think, work as a team to market those assets that we're gonna have. We're investing the people's money and we're putting it in the areas that we know it can be utilized, but I think this, that when you go and look at it all as a team, it's gonna help us to figure out that we get the best utilization out of that. Um, when we talk about, you know, that we are kicking off an anti-violence program or the start of one very soon, in the next few weeks, as, as many of you are part of that, um, I do think, you know, when I looked at Obama's program, A Leader in Me, and tried to get that in the schools years ago, cuz it started with little bitty kids, and, and you're exactly right, which I know you know that as an educator, by the time they're twelve years old, it's, it's really too late. And so that program starts in pre-K and works up. And, and it, and it works. I don't know why every school doesn't have that. I mean, it, it's a really good program. But we are gonna have some money left. We are kicking off the beginning, which is just see something, say something. That's not the slogan, but that's the whole point. We are trying to get people to work as a community and stop some of these violent incidents before they happen because we do see after the fact, unfortunately, you know, that for two and three weeks before, there's count, ring doorbell footage of, of kids with guns, of things going on that shouldn't. So the beginning of the program is just to try to raise awareness and hopefully somebody will pick up the phone so that we can get those guns off the street. But I realize that's just, that's just a small part of it. So if you have any ideas, because we are gonna have some money left, you have any ideas of how we could reach those parents, how we could assist, bring them forward. I mean, it's not too late. We'll launch this first part, but it's only the first part. In the summer, we are gonna try to reach kids and do some programs that actually reach out to kids, but after that, it's where do we go from there? Because we are spending it in small little chunks. So if you have some ideas and, and have some experiences, which I know many of you do, of how we could incorporate some education to the parents, how we could reach those families, man, bring it on. We are gonna have the ability, no, we can't fix all the problems and, and that's not the role of government, but on the flip side, this is our community. So it's a role of us as the citizens in this community because, you know, you never forget, that's what we are. We might represent five thousand people each and, and Ricky and I, the whole community, but we all live here and we are part of this town, so if you have some ideas, please bring them forward. It's not a rush, but that is something that's gonna be ongoing the whole time that we have our performance. Uh, I'm trying to stretch it out over the next two years. So if you have an idea, bring it. Uh, uh, we look forward to it, as always. Other than that, our next meeting is March twenty-first. Uh, thank you tonight. We had some really good discussions and with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.